Yeah, well, I started on my dead car, but um. But um, so do you, do you have to be powerful to give the value?
Yeah, he's gonna be ready and then um, once we start, it's gonna be able to allow them to have the panelists. So we can see them.
So you're unmuted.
There's one. Yeah. I think that's the one down there. Um, did you think about how this is on? One of the things that we could do that. So if you can just share the concept and then pretend to, I can actually talk to it. You know, I have a question. And people will help me. I feel like I'm just not. I'm just, yeah, I feel like. I don't know. I told you. Yeah, so. Jay, uh, Jay will be a couple of minutes later. Did you say how late you were gonna be? You said a minute. Hey Sean? Yeah, yeah, can I just uh, talk to Lorenzo and Harry? As uh, as uh, my uh, way to go through. Probably what you said. I think he has a lot of time. Yeah. I'll call the backup. Gotta represent the team. Yes. I was trying, I was trying to, when I logged on my back end, sorry. Oh, right. I'm looking at people. It's like. I'd like to. I'm going to. Do the. But. Can you, can you send them their pictures? Sure. I noticed that uh, CSD started using uh, uh, fancy um, drill logo as well. So uh, I wonder if we inspired that. I know they watch our video. Yeah, I don't know if we should be able to. Yeah, I think you uh, uh, very um. I think I'll be sure. Do you have something like that? No, I just. I tried again, getting background. So this is, I think, better than what you guys just did. We should get the simple. I think it's called the gold logo that's important. So, well, she's in Farsberg, I mean, it's all. Farsberg, that's, that's a very special character. Well, we have to. She lives around. While, and half, where would this be? Like halfway between Farsberg and. So that's the next time I'm gonna try my eyes on. I think that was more about when this could be. I think it's about.
Okay, well, we should be live.
All right, good evening, everybody. Time is now six oh one, and I would like to welcome everybody to the Galt City Council meeting for Tuesday, February the sixteenth. Think I got the date right. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have to continue to handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm going to ask our city manager, Mr. Lorenzo Heinz, to now give a brief explanation to the public. Mr. Heinz.
Thank you. Good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with the state and county stay-at-home orders and as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or by video conference only until further notice. Tonight's agenda, or tonight's agenda um, states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the county city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda items subject to the customary five-minute time limit, unless the same individual appears and requests to speak live during the meeting. We will take live comments first, and then the written comments will be read out loud. We are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link um, to enter the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to raise their hand. There's a raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let you, let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. We request, as we typically do in, when in-person, in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted by doing so, uh, but, but doing so is not required. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Mr. Mayor, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. I will now call the meeting to order. If you could please take a roll call, Ms. Hubert.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg. Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. You now all please join us in a silent prayer and we'll be followed by a flag salute by a member of our citizen. So if you would now join me in a prayer, please. All right, thank you, everybody. Tonight, we are going to start doing something new. We're going to have a citizen of Galt lead us in our flag salute. I would like to introduce Mr. Bob Bellier. Are you there, Mr. Bellier?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Can you see?
I asked Mr. Bellier here tonight uh, to lead us in a flag salute, something I'd like to start doing. And I just want to say some, little something about to introduce Mr. Bellier before he leads us in the pledge. As I said, the salute will be led tonight by a military veteran, Mr. Bob Bellier. Bob is a native of Germany who served in the US Army in nineteen sixty-five, before he was even a US citizen. He served for eight years, including tours in Vietnam, where he was awarded the Bronze Star. He also served in Berlin before the wall came down, as well as time in South Korea, and became a US citizen in nineteen sixty-nine. In Bob's words, his volunteering came from the heart because he wanted to give back to his adopted country for everything it had done for him and continues to do for him, especially for the US troops that supported him in the orphanage. He grew up in Germany after the war. So, thank you, Mr. Bellier, for your service. If you would like to lead us in the pledge, you may start whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, and thank you again for your service to our country.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, uh, if you would like to read our replay statement, Ms. Hubert.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The ma- meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, February nineteenth at nine AM and Saturday, February twentieth at nine AM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from the Sacramento Central Library.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next item, item B, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do I have anything from the council?
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
Sir Vandenberg, please go ahead.
Item C, one and two, can we reverse that order?
Item B, one and two, uh, the Measure R report and the overview, you want to change the order?
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, discuss the uh, the hows and whys of the Measure R before we receive the report.
Okay. Uh, do we have any objection to flip-flopping those items from the council?
No, Mr. Mayor, I think this is the right thing to do because we need to, you know, listen to the item C too fast before, uh, you know, we approve it. Thank you.
All right, any other comments on this? Yes, Mr. Lozano.
I, I just have a quick question. I, I know the mayor and the city manager put the, uh, the agenda together, and so I'd just like to hear i- if there was a specific reason of putting those in that order, and if so, then we take that into consideration before moving it.
A good question. For me, I, I didn't, you know, not really thinking about it at the time that we're gonna do an overview of what it is, and then we're gonna have to report. I mean, I kind of understand what my fellow council members are asking because to do an overview and then do the report. Mr. Heinz, would you like to comment on that?
Well, the, the thinking was, is that the report itself was, it's a procedural report that was passed out of the Measure R Committee. And the reason it's on the agenda right now is because I held it back because I was doing some research on Measure R. Having done that research, I felt confident that, that we can add it back and submit it for council's approval. And I wanted to get that taken care of because it should have been, it's, it's very late, and I just wanted to get it taken care of. And then I wanted to come back afterwards and explain, uh, give an overview of Measure R. And um, that was my thinking.
Okay. Uh, you, and you have a problem with us flip-flopping the order in that?
No, I don't have a problem with it as long as that report gets approved. Okay? Because it's been, it's been there too long.
Okay, well, unless there's a objection from another council member, I think we'll go ahead and just flip those, if that's okay. Is that okay?
Yeah, that makes, that makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
Just wanted to hear if there was an explanation as to why.
All right, then, um, any other additions or deletions regarding the consent calendar from anybody? Okay. With that, then we will move on to item C, Presentations, and we'll start with item C two, uh, overview of Galt Municipal Code three point four zero point one four zero Measure R. Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So can everyone see the PowerPoint? Okay, great, great. And the PowerPoint um, essentially mimics the staff report. I just wanted to just make it easier to um, talk about this information. So we're gonna talk about section three point four zero point one four zero of the Galt Municipal Code, which is otherwise known as Measure R. So Measure R is a half-cent retail sales tax, sales and use tax intended to fund public safety, passed in twenty oh eight. These revenues are maintained in Fund forty-seven, which is a special fund for Measure R proceeds. The key provisions of this code section is that these dollars are, uh, requires the city to use these Measure R revenues, these dollars, only for pu- police services. Also provided an initial police services expenditure plan, which included seven positions. Five patrol officers, one school resource officer, one gang task force officer, and two dispatchers. Uh, the, the code section states that police services, the police services expenditure plan may be amended from time to time by a majority vote of the city council, so long as the fund continues to be utilized for police services. The code section further states that council may not amend the expenditure plan until such time as all new police personnel proposed in the current expenditure plan are funded. So when Measure R was initially enacted, there were seven positions, those seven positions you see in number two, that were part of the original plan. And so what this code section, at least the way I'm reading this code section, is basically there's no modifying the expenditure plan until all of those original positions are funded. And they were all funded as of twenty fourteen, fifteen. Number five, revenues collected hereunder shall supplement rather than replace existing city expenditures for police services as reflected in uh, the FY twenty oh seven slash twenty oh eight budget. And we'll talk about these provisions a little bit more. The adopted budget for twenty twenty slash twenty-two contains ten point seven four sworn positions, and this is the way it looks in Measure R. There are seven police officers. Uh, there is one professional standards officer. There are incremental salary increases for thirty-two officers, which equates to two point seven four positions. There are two point five civilian positions, two point oh police dispatchers, and a half of a position for a police records assistant. So the expenditure plan that we have spoken to is essentially the adopted budget for Measure R. And so the council is, is brought a proposed budget by staff every couple of years, every two years. And, and, and again, it's modified in the sort of off-years if there's a proposal. But that expenditure plan and the authorized budget, I see those two as the same item because they're both expenditure plans. Now, Measure R basically requires us to maintain two maintenance of efforts in order to utilize these funds beyond uh, the expenditure levels that were originally enacted. And so as far as adding and modifying positions to the expenditure plan, the council may not amend the expenditure plan until such time as all new police per- uh, personnel proposed in the current expenditure plan. as all new police personnel proposed in the current expenditure plan. Now, current meaning the original expenditure plan are funded. The police personnel referenced in this code section were funded completely as of FY 2014, 2015. And so we've met that standard, that hurdle. Therefore, having met that minimum threshold, council has the authority to modify the expenditure plan going forward as long as the MOE is maintained. And as you can see in the prior slides where we have a police records assistant, there is a standards officer, we have modified the expenditure plan going forward because we're able to meet that maintenance of effort. So that was the MOE related to positions. There is also another MOE that is related to funding. And so revenues collected hereunder shall supplement rather than replace existing city expenditures for police services as reflected in the 2007/2008 budget. So that, and that in essence, again, sets a maintenance of effort threshold. And, and so down here in the third budget bullet, the 2007/2008 Galt Police Department budget was 5.422 million. The 2020/21 budget is 6.7 million. The 2021/22 budget is 6.8 or 6.9 million. So as long as we're maintaining that 5.4 million, we are free to modify the expenditure plan. And as noted in the prior slide, we have modified the original expenditure plan by adding those additional positions. And given that both the budget years exceeds the 2007/2008 MOE, as I mentioned, that council has the ability to modify the expenditure plan. The focus on Measure R does not focus on individuals. It focuses on, because an officer is not restricted to one fund or another. That officer may end up transferring to different positions based on the needs of the organization and the direction of the police chief. So just because an officer sits in the general fund position now, there's no prohibition that that officer can't be transferred to a position that sits in Measure R. The focus instead should be on the maintenance of effort. And the city council's approved expenditure plan, i.e. the adopted budget, when analyzing whether an expenditure is appropriate under Measure R. The city's auditors also ensure that total annual Measure R expenditures do not exceed budget. Total positions charged to Measure R do not exceed the positions approved by council. And that the threshold identified in Galt Municipal Code 3.40.140 is met. I wanted to briefly go through how the code section defines police services. There's been some conversation in the community about what we can and can't spend on, can and can't spend Measure R dollars on. And there was also questions about the MOE and council's authority as it relates to the MOEs, and I hope I've answered the question about the MOE. But I want to make it clear that police services, for the purposes of the expenditure plan, means all programs, functions, and operations of the Galt Police Department. And then it lists some items that are included, that the makers of this act wanted to make sure that they, these programs stood out as being included, but it says all programs, functions, and operations of the Galt PD. And then I wanted to also focus your attention on the last line because the makers made it clear that this is a measure to increase police presence in the city of Galt's neighborhoods, parks, and schools. And so there is, there are restrictions on utilization of these funds. They are intended for the Galt PD. So between the dollars that we have in the general fund and the dollars that we have in Measure R, those are two sums of money that are intended to support the Galt PD and to make sure that they have the equipment and talent that they need to protect citizens of Galt. As far as next steps are concerned, there was some question earlier this year about a position that had ended up in Measure R when the current budget was passed. That position, because it was passed by the council, is authorized, it is duly authorized and appropriately authorized. The only change I would make is that staff needed to be a bit more transparent and making sure that council knew that that position was in the expenditure plan, and I think staff did not do a good job of that. And so staff will be more transparent when proposing modifications of future expenditure plans. You will probably get a separate presentation, I'm sorry, you will get a separate presentation on the Measure R budgets going forward. We will lay it bare for everyone to see what we're doing or what we're proposing. In addition, the Measure R fund balance, which you will see when we present the CAFR, the city's comprehensive annual financial report, at the next council meeting, you will see that the balance of, the balance in the Measure R fund on June 30, 2020 was 1.3 million. From my ex-finance director perspective, I believe this fund and its funding are underutilized. And so future budget requests and recommendations are forthcoming to better utilize these funds to support the Galt PD. If anyone has issues with these, the proposals that we're going to bring forth, we can always have a policy discussion as to what council believes we can and can't spend out of the Measure R fund. But it's clear to me as the new guy in town with fresh eyes on this code section that the makers of this, this code section made it clear that this is for support of the Galt PD and increasing their presence in our community. And it also set forth two maintenance of efforts thresholds that the city must meet in order for any modifications of future expenditure plans. And I'll take questions now.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. I think what I'll do is I'll go around each council member first to see if anybody has any questions before we see if there's any public comments. So we'll start with Vice Mayor Sandu. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Hines, thank you for the presentation. You exactly, you explained on that what happened the previous, and exactly we need to be vigilant what we're going to do in the future. And especially this Measure R, when the citizen of Galt, they approved back in 2008, why they proved that they want to pacify the safety of the city. And I do understand there was, the council take the action or staff take the action. The community or myself was not that much aware of that. We all, the way you explaining is, I really, you know, appreciate you. You come in front, what was in the report, and thank you for making the commitment, we're going to do the right thing. And before I make more comment, I'd like to go next, my colleagues, or public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papinow.
I don't have any questions right now. The presentation was very clear. Thank you.
Councilmember Vanderburg?
Yeah, I have, you know, a couple of observations and questions. To me, in Section 3.40.150, the last two sentences, if you interpret the last sentence, the way the city manager stated, those two sentences contradict each other, or maybe I should say they are in conflict with each other because it clearly says, "No revenues collected pursuant to the tax levy hereby may be spent on general fund operating expenses." So that's a clear no. And my understanding, my present understanding is that one of the contentions is it was spent, some of the Measure R money was spent on a detective that would, should have been spent out of general fund monies. So I mean, I can understand why someone would read the last sentence that way, and when it points to FY 2007, 2008, you know, it's supposed to be 2008, 2009, but it doesn't specifically state a dollar amount, so you could also interpret that to mean these are all the things that, what's in there is what we spend it as line items and not dollar values. You know, you're not supposed to spend any, any Measure R money on those line items such as people, etc. That makes sense. And then I'm curious, the city council voted on this, and perhaps they weren't as aware of as we'd like them to be. So it's, you know, falls on them a little. But there's no rule going back and changing that. I'm curious what legal counsel has to say about that.
Well, before we, before we go to Harriet, let me, let me address your first statement. And folks, we're on page 3 of 3 of the staff report, and the council member did quote, it's the last bullet on that page, and it says, "Revenues collected hereunder shall supplement rather than replace existing city expenditures for police services." But here's the twist, as reflected in the 2007/2008 budget. And if we go back to the bullet above that, it says, "No revenues collected pursuant to this tax levy hereby may be spent on general fund operating expenses in effect at the time this ordinance becomes effective." So those operating expenses that were in effect for the 7, 8 budget, again, I see this as a maintenance of effort. Operating expenses and budgets come and go. And so we have a budget that's in effect right now for 21, 2021. On June 30 of 2020, June 30 of this year, 2021, those operating expenditures become ineffective. They're gone. And the 21, 22 operating expenditures become effective. So the way I see this document and the way I see this language is it's saying, essentially, our operating expenses that are in effect at this time, that this, this, this act was enacted. And so that's the way I'm seeing it. And so, and that's the way I'll be presenting it to council. Now, by the way, all of this has been vetted by the city attorney. So it's just not Lorenzo going off on a whim. But the city attorney has, has reviewed this, and I'm going to turn it over to Harriet for the second question.
So I did want to say first off that we have reviewed this, both Kimberly and I have reviewed this, and we are in agreement with what Mr. Hines just stated. I think when you look at the paragraph as a whole and you look at the sentence as a whole that Mr. Vanderburg just quoted, I think it's pretty, it's very clear that this was intended to be a maintenance of effort type issue and not something that expanded every year in and of itself. And so I think when you look at this, you look at what the 2007 budget looked like, and that's your level of maintenance of effort. Then there was the requirement to make the personnel hires that was set forth in the original, you know, when this was adopted, and that's the plan. And then once that plan is satisfied, then the council can modify the plan and start adding additional services or additional people, you know, through, you know, when there's money available. So I think that the way it was presented by the city manager and staff report is accurate and defensible from a legal point of view. Now, I have to tell you, could you repeat your second question? Because I think I just put them all together in my mind. So if you have another question, if you could please let me know, I'll be happy to try to answer for you.
The city council has already, past city council has already voted to pass or accept the report that was mixed in with other items. Is that improper, unchangeable? You know, what's the legal status of that?
Well, so I think once the council acts, that's the council action. And generally speaking, you wouldn't go back and redo those actions. I think what the council, this council should do is go forward to start doing it as a separate report as, as has been suggested. I don't think that, generally speaking, the budget actions of the council, you know, are done. And then when the money is expended, there's a very short period in which some third party could challenge that, but there's no, there's no just going back to the, you know, through the whole thing just to, to clarify or change. All the city council can do now is look at what its current funds are and start, you know, more closely complying with the ordinance.
Thank you, and that's why I wanted clarification on that. You know, I just wanted to touch bases before I let someone else speak, but I just want to touch bases. So a lot of talk about the intent of this measure. So I actually printed out the original measure when it went to ballot and noticed that Terry Parker Owings, who is now on our school board, was one of the people that wrote arguments for it. So I contacted her, and she was quite clear that the intent of the law was not to fund things outside of gang-related expenditures. That's not what she ever thought it would be, and even at the beginning of 3150, I think, it mentions Exhibit A, Exhibit 1, and it's titled "City of Galt Anti-Gang, Anti-Drug Public Safety Measure," nothing else. And it also says in there that positions will not be used to supplant existing general fund authorized personnel. And then there's six years of expenditures to show everybody what's going to happen. All those things suggest that we are not to fund such things as detectives. So that's all, I just want to put that out there, then I'll let someone else speak. Thank you.
And, and council member, you put a number of other things in jeopardy by not just the detectives with that interpretation.
I'm not clear what you mean about that, Mr. Lorenzo.
Well, the, the way that he's interpreting it, and by the way, and I understand, because I talked to council member Vanderburg earlier. Now, I understand the position that he received from Ms. Parker. However, the only thing I have to go on is the resultant code section. I wasn't here 12 years ago, wasn't here 13 years ago, but that code section is what remains. And if we were to isolate and say that we can only use these dollars for gangs, gang prevention and, and, and gang awareness as, as the council member is indicating, guess what, that half of police assistant goes back to the general fund, that standards officer goes back to the general fund, that those police raises for that equate to 2.74 positions goes back to the general fund. And I think that the folks who've made those changes to, or proposed those amendments to the expenditure plan, fully understood that there were two maintenance of efforts involved, and as long as we were adhering to the maintenance of efforts threshold, which are clearly stated in the code as it sits right now on our books, not as it was intended or anyone's interpretation of the attendance. That's the way it's written on the code, in the code right now. And that's the way we have been applying it. Now, if there was some disconnect between the makers, the original originators of this code and the final words that you see on paper, there's no indication of that other than the interpretation of one person.
And if I could add, I mean, I think when you have to look at the paragraph as a whole, right? And I think, you know, when you look at the exhibit and you look at the first Public Services Expenditure Plan, it was focused on certain types of officers and making sure that those got hired. And making sure that those got hired and that there was a maintenance of effort from the two thousand seven, two thousand and eight budget. And that those types of officers that were in the original plan um are hired. And, you know, a- and that you have those services, but then when you keep going through the paragraph. Clearly, it says that the council has the ability to modify the plan after the plan is satisfied, which is what we have. And then it has a definition of what you could spend the money on and gang services is one of those things, but it's by no means all of those things. And so it wouldn't make real, it wouldn't make sense to have a definition that was broad enough to cover. Pretty much the entire police department and, you know, in the after condition, after you've had. Plan, after you've met the plan, and when you start looking at what you're going to do with for, you know. Having met the maintenance of effort, what else you might do, it wouldn't make sense to have. Um, to say it was only gang related when the definition of what the expenditures could be includes much more than just gang related activities. Or anti-gang related activities. So I think that's where um, both, both the city manager and city attorney's office think that. Um, and have opined that we believe that what the city's been doing meets the requirements of measure R.
If, if I could jump in here real quick and I, I'm, Miss Councilor Lozano, I'm gonna let you go just. I'm gonna say something real quick and I'll let you go, cause I know it's your turn to uh, to comment. But I think, I think specifically what Jay's addressing too is, and I agree with what you said, Harry, is that the council does have the right to amend, clearly we've done that. To some extent, we've added additional positions beyond the original seven, I think it was. We've added a, you know, we added a, a professional standards officer, if I don't, if I recall, was one position that we didn't originally have. We've added that and we added some other things, but I think what he's specifically talking about, i- it's one thing to say. The council's gonna add, you know, a P S O position and then we're gonna go ahead and fund that, or we're gonna add an additional dispatcher or go and fund that. We've now created those expenditure plans through the proper protocols with the city council. Where we are presented with that, we look and say, okay, that's great, let's add that, you know, we see the expenditure plan, we approve it. But what he's uh commenting to rep you to is that there was a position that uh, if I'm understanding correctly, was named as a detective. Which there is no detective position named within measure R, that position doesn't exist nor does it exist in the, the recently adopted expenditure plan. That we just approved recently as the council, so I think there's where his, that's, that's what he's pointing to specifically, so it's not. The fact that we have the right to add and amend, we do, I, I think he's just. And again, this might go back to the, to the error that, that Lorenzo was speaking of that, that was made. Uh, and, 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 but that's what he's talking about specifically. Um, not if that makes sense, so. Uh, I, I would like to let Rich speak real quick and then we can circle back to Harriet and, and city manager, Rich. Do you have comments, please go ahead.
No, I just, I, I, uh, I don't have any questions or comments, uh, Mister Heinz, thank you for taking all the time that you did today. Uh, with me on the, this and other issues, but specifically uh, this item. Um, I, I, I'm comfortable that it was presented the way my, I understood it. Um, and, and, you know, this is year three for me on this council. Um, and I, and this has been an issue that we have been uh looking at, or at least uh that has been um. Uh, a topic of conversation for, for well over three years, more like four to five in my estimation. Um, and so uh, I'm, I am comfortable uh about hearing from the public. Uh, on this, on this item, but I have no specific questions.
Yeah, um, so I, I just have two items real quick and then I think I'm gonna go to public comment, I will allow the rest of the council to speak again, uh, if they have something to say. Specifically, uh, a- and I do understand, it's definitely been eh. What I call a gray area with the supplement and not replace, I mean, I, I, I studied this measure R long before I was in the council and it was. It's been brought up many a time by people in the community, um, that they're saying that wasn't the original intent, I've, I've heard from. Matter of fact, I've spoken to probably five people that were either a council member or sat on the actual committee that formed this within the night, when, within the last three or four days. Spoke to them by phone, and some of them don't even live in California anymore, just trying to understand kind of the history of this. And unfortunately, on the one item, I feel that it really, it, it's just, you know, the wording was just not very clear and it left the door open, you know, it specifically does say. You know, uh, supplement replace, you know, but then it further says, you know, except for reflected in the, or says. Expenditures for services as reflected in F, FY two thousand seven, two thousand eight, so clearly, um. I can see how that's interpreted now and it has been interpreted for, like Rich mentioned, the three years that we've been on the council. As, as long as we're spending, you know, the five point four million that was the police budget, I believe that's the correct number. Uh, back uh, in, in those seven, that no matter what the budget is now, we're able to then go into the measure our funds for things, um. Uh, as long as we do that, and I, and I can understand, to me, that's language that, you know, regardless of what the intent was in the beginning, it definitely. You know, they left the door open, it was poorly worded for sure, if, if that's not what they intended. Um, but the second item, I, I'm curious, and this is what kinda, I get, I read this pretty well today and I got kinda hung up on this and you just said it. In item where it says, um, the measure R states the council may not amend this expenditure plan until such time as all new police personnel. Proposed in the current expenditure plan are funded. And then it re- and then it references that those, those positions were funded as of two thousand fifteen, but what's interesting is the word current. So if you're reading this, if you're reading this in two thousand and eight, then you're gonna say, well, that means currently, you know, whatever currently is two thousand and eight, so. In thirteen years from now, you know, that will be what that number is, but if you're reading this today, it says what's proposed in the current expenditure plan. Because we have changing expenditures plan, the way I read this is. If we have a current expenditure plan, we look at that and say. Okay, here's our current expenditure plan that we just passed, if in two years from now, we look back and say we wanna add, you know, another dispatch position or whatever. That we need to make sure that we've met and filled the positions that are in the current. Expenditure plan, which is the one we've most recently adopted, but you're referring to it as current, meaning the one that was adopted thirteen years ago, so I, I'm. I'm just really hung up on that, you see that, you see the difference in terms of.
I see what you mean, um, so the way I see that is I read it as current and again. Whoever authored this legislation needed to be a little more clear, because I would have put. The actual fiscal year like they did in other parts of that. Um, uh, code section, but when I read that, I, when I hear, read current. And we're talking about an act that happened in twenty oh seven, twenty oh eight, that tells me that it's. Is speak, it's speaking to, and, and council member Vandenberg just brought it up, there were seven original positions. That were part of measure R. And they are laid on in exhibit one. And so the, the uh, the, the request or the, the, the um. The threshold was that all four, all seven of those positions. Uh, would have to be funded before any modifications are made. And so those positions were funded as of twenty fourteen, fifteen. But if you interpret it differently and say current is today. Those seven positions are still funded. Okay, because, because those are, that's part of the maintenance of effort. We have to fund those seven before we can, before we can go out to ten point seven four sworn officers. Seven of those are part of the M O E.
And so, so to clarify then, what you're saying is. The last expenditure report that was actually presented. Before the council approved the one that was, that was altered that you referred to, that was included in the last budget, it was, you know, mixed in with the budget. So before that was presented, the only previous expenditure report was the one from fourteen fifteen, is that what you're saying, and, and, and that was funded?
Again, and what I'm, what I'm saying is, and I think we're, I'm, I'm trying to make sure we're clear. As budgets are presented to council, the one thing that you're going to see since twenty fourteen, fifteen. Is that seven positions at a minimum are funded. And then we add um, the uh, uh, standards officer. It's okay to do that because those seven are funded. Then we add the incremental increases for thirty two officers, that's okay, because those seven are funded. And so. You know, uh, we add half a police records person, that's okay, because those seven are funded. And so those seven remain funded, um, if, if we were ever not to fund those seven, then we. We couldn't make any changes to the expenditure plan, so whether it's interpreted as current in twenty oh seven, twenty oh eight. Or it's interpreted as current right now, those seven positions are still funded.
And I, and I understand that, and I, but I think that, and, and that's good that they are, because then we're not in, in, in a little bit of a.
No, no, and it's that.
Where I think we circle back to though is that we are talking about. Clearly, there's some interpretation of language, now, the other one is very definitive, but you even said it yourself, what's interesting is you said. That in the, in the, and the other code, and the other part of the, 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 the reference, it referenced two thousand seven, two thousand eight FY. But in this particular sentence, it doesn't reference that.
Right.
I, I, you were saying that if they would have been smart, they would have, they would have put more language, but.
It's, they, they've given us enough direction in the other parts of the code that gives us a very strong hint. That the seven need to be funded and five point four two two million need to be funded. And so as long as the, as long as those two elements are in every spending plan that we put before you. Then I think we're good.
So the, the next question would be, thank you for, and, and thank you for your input on that, uh. The, a- and you clearly, there's been a discussion in the past, you know, since um. Vice Mayor Sandu and Councilmember Lozano, the three of us have been on council, there was a couple, it's, this is where we, you know, we bought, I think right off the bat. Um, we, we purchased nine patrol cars, I think in December of nineteen. And the first thing came up was, well, are we allowed to do that because it's not people, it's, it's equipment, well. Clearly, you know, I've read through and it does state in more than one place about equipment, and I think that came up again with the radios. And um, and I don't think there's any question about the, the language that's in there that says that we could do that, and, and so. Again, there, th- this is an ongoing thing we discussed, but what I'm wondering is. That, so. It, where is the language though that says, or is it just kind of understood, I'm, I'm just curious, maybe Harri- Harriet can interpret this, or maybe um. Brian Kalanowski, our interim chief can comment, but about the, that we're funding, we're basically funding raises for police officers out of measure R, and these are not. This is not raises for measure R uh, officers, the, this is, we're funding two point seven four positions, which is not really positions. But it amounts to two point seven four positions, these are salary increases for thirty two officers, clearly those are officers in the general fund. We're allowed to do that.
Let me, let me, let me address that. In the measure R, and I'm, then I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Kalanowski, who has the history. But in the measure R code section, it says for purposes of this plan, police services, means. All programs, functions, operations of the Galt Police Department, including hiring additional police personnel. Recruitment and retention of police officers. And now I'm gonna turn it over to the chief.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mister Heinz, and so that is accurate, our operating procedure for measure R. Has been based on the seven positions being funded. Sometimes you could not have all those positions filled because of vacancies or something, but the revenue stream. Has to be present and the expenditure made in the budget, and so when I was here. I was pretty new here, but I think it was in twenty fourteen, we did a formal expenditure adjustment and. Made some changes to the um expenditure plan, including equipment purchases and. Technology and a lot of things that we did at that time, is we had a fund balance in there and we were gonna spend it down and do some things for the department. Um, also within that was a decision made that um. Uh, we were losing officers and we were having a hard time keeping up with our neighbors, and so a part of the deal to fund the officers raises. The provision for retention was used based on the fact that those seven positions had been filled. And they were using the retention portion of that for those raises. In addition, we created a corporal program where we have and can have up to six corporals. In, I think it's six uh, corporals in the department. Um, and that is a, um, currently an assignment, some agencies, it's a promotion. But it's an assigned position in the organization that uh affords you a five percent pay bump because you're performing duties. As an officer in charge, if we are missing a sergeant for a particular period of time and or a training program. So, um, these are all enhancements to keep us contemporary with uh, the expectations of the public in law enforcement. Um, and these are all done under, with the idea that the baseline. Uh, seven officers and two dispatchers are funded. One of those, uh, somebody mentioned about detectives, one of those positions in detectives is a gang officer. That position is not currently filled. Um, and that's the issue that came up where the position was placed. Uh, in the budget and filled um, unbeknownst to the department until later. But that issue's been rectified and I believe Mister Heinz has a sound. Strategy for breaking out the measure R expenditures like we used to do. Um, when you see budget, so you clearly understand what the revenue and expenditure forecast is for the next year and coming years. And you understand what our program issues and needs are for the department. Um, so we're not doing these one offs and coming to you. For portables mid-year and things, those things should be handled in the budget, we made those requests, it didn't make it, but um, I'm confident under. Mister Heinz's leadership, we're, we're sailing the right way, so I think we're good, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but I did wanna get that in.
And, and I wanted to add, and I wanted to reiterate one more time. That there's a fund balance in measure R of one point three million dollars. Now, I know we've had a lot of discussions about intent. But I can pretty much guarantee that the voters who voted this in didn't intend for this fund. To be a savings account. They intended it for the utilization, at least based on my reading of the code. They intended it to be utilized by the Galt P D. Again, for those, for all programs, functions and operations of that department. To increase their presence in the city of Galt's neighborhoods, parks and schools. And so it's there as a lever to allow the Galt P D to do what it needs to do. Because bottom line, that's the way I read this initiative, this is about helping that department. Do what it needs to do to protect our folks. And we can talk about whether certain things are interpreted one way or another, we can have that discussion, I think the, I think the code's pretty clear. But bottom line. There are dollars in measure R to support the Galt P D, there are dollars in the general fund to support the Galt P D. And the fact that there's one point three million dollars just sitting there, doesn't sit well with your city manager. So we're going to bring, bringing, be bringing forth some um, proposals. To address some of the needs that the Galt P D has right now. And um, I've been with you six months and this is just one of those revelations that I think it's a good thing that we found this. And we're gonna get the Galt P D what they need, because that's what the voters intended.
Well, and I appreciate that, and thank you, Mister Heinz, and, and thank you, uh, interim chief Kalanowski for, for that um clarification and, and I, and I am. I am pleased that, to, that there is some acknowledgement that there was an error made, I mean, it's important that for the spirit of transparency. That we do that, um, and I want to be very clear that. You know, my comments, and I don't think really anybody's comments on this council, uh, are, are ones to undermine support of the police department, we've all, we've all have demonstrated. Our, our extensive support in our votes, um, for, you know, the ones that just came on, including the three of us that have been um. Uh, on your for almost three year, for, in our third year now, we have always been very supportive and we will continue to do so, and I, and I agree with you. I've read the ballot measure and what it said originally, people voted on, and I think we've met most of that. Um, uh, with the exception of maybe the bicycle patrols or something that's mentioned there, but um. Uh, anyways, um, I don't think we, absolutely, and you know that you and I have had this conversation, Lorenzo, where I don't like to see money. I don't wanna see money collected from a bond measure that was intended for public safety. Um, go unused and go um wasted, because it doesn't help the community be safe or it doesn't help anybody. If it just sits there and be, and is a savings account. Um, and so we need to put that, that money to the use that it was intended. However, with that said, with all that being said, I just want to be very clear that I think the reason we're asking these questions is because. I don't care if it's one point three million, or if it's seven point five million dollars. It's gotta be spent by the certain protocols and that was outlined. By the bond measure, by the language, however it's interpreted. And it has to be stuck to very specifically, and the expenditure sport reports have to be very clear and presented in a way which I. Very happy that you guys are gonna break those out, I was gonna actually recommend that tonight, um, because it needs to be broken out, it needs to be discussed separately. And as long as we're doing that, by the way, the people are intended, because if we're not. I mean, we can't just go to the people and go, well, thanks for the bond measure and you approved this, you know, there's just so much money in there, I don't think we need to follow any rules anymore, let's just. Get all willy-nilly to start spending money, we can't, we clearly, we know that there's rules and there's protocols and we need to make sure that we. We can't, clearly we know that there's rules and there's protocols and we need to make sure that we follow those. So with that being said, um, I'd like to go around to the council again. Does any of the council, any of the council members have anything further to comment on this particular item? Before I ask the chief or the city manager to comment further. Anybody?
We're going to have a public comment?
We are going to have a public comment, yes. Would you like to do that next and then?
I'd like to hear that before going into.
Let's see if we have any public comment and then we'll circle back to the council and staff again. Ms. Huber, do we have any public comment? Any written comment?
No written comment.
Okay. Rose, do we have any hands raised online?
We do have one person who has their hand raised, so I'll go ahead and Ms. Kami Martin. If I can have you unmute your mic. There we go.
Can you hear me?
We could hear you.
All right. So here I am, I'm nearing the end of my fourth year, at the end of my term on the measure R committee. And last week was the first time I'd ever heard the term MOE, maintenance of effort. That being said, the measure R, actual measure, it lays out what it's to be used for. Hiring additional police personnel, recruitment, retention of officers. So that's where we get warrants position. Retention of officers, that's where we have the MOU increase, enhancing youth, anti-gang, anti-drug programs, improving police training, purchasing police equipment, enhancing graffiti abatement, increasing police presence in the city of Galt's neighborhoods, parks and schools. Nobody wants to decrease the amount of money we're spending at our police department. We want to increase it. Nobody has said anything about not spending money at the police department. I'm not sure where people are coming up with that idea. At the December 1st, 2020 council meeting, I spoke regarding the measure R report out for fiscal year 2018 to 2019. During which I laid out in detail my grave concern regarding the misallocation of 284,560 of measure R funds, which were improperly spent on a position that to be frank, does not exist in our current department. Is Officer Fisher even on a gang task force? Maybe one of you can tell me. When is the last time we even participated in one? Is there an inter-agency team that we work with? Following the, the December 1st meeting, the measure R committee was to meet on January 27th. That day came and went. The committee did not receive any meeting cancellation notification. I reached out to our committee chair, who was unaware of the meeting having been canceled. I reached out to council member Farmer, who also had no knowledge of cancellation. I'm curious if any other members of council or city staff have been notified. Isn't it normal practice to give notice when a city meeting is canceled? Having met with the chair of the measure R committee, Mr. Cooley earlier this week, and having reviewed the report out for fiscal year 2018, 2019, he and I both have concerns with the report that is not being given by the committee, but instead by the city, which is in direct contradiction with the measure R, with measure R. The report out does not even mention the task force position and goes so far as to state, through the review, the committee confirmed that proper stewardship was maintained over funds in accordance with the measure R sales tax ordinance. How can we in good conscience agree that, with that statement, knowing that an almost $300,000 error is being blatantly ignored? What do we, what we do agree upon are the following. Please note, as members of measure R, we agree that one of the two following actions should take place. One, put the money back, or two, if for some reason it cannot be put back, provide clarity as to why it cannot be put back. We have a very clear understanding of the language of measure R. We know that we are not charged with decision-making. That being said, had the measure been followed by staff to begin with, we would not be here. The lack of fiscal transparency has been brought to the attention of staff on countless occasions, as recently as last week, during both public and private sessions. These mentions, however, have proved fruitless as financial reporting has remained convoluted and increasingly difficult to understand. Additionally, the amount of financial documents that the committee currently receives has decreased in comparison to past years. For example, the committee no longer receives quarterly tax reporting as we did in past years. The language of the measure is very specific regarding the commingling of funds. It states as follows. No revenues collected pursuant to the tax levied hereby may be spent on general fund operating expenses in effect at the time this ordinance becomes effective or projects that are not a part of the police services expenditure plan. Revenues collected here shall supplement, rather than replace existing city expenditure for police services as reflected in the fiscal year 2007, 2008 budget. In plain English, that means you can't use measure R money on general fund stuff, which is what we have done. What we have done is illegal. We need to fix it. All of this money ultimately contributes to one thing, retention. No matter how you slice it, it will at the end of the day result in a reduction in attrition, employee turnover, increased morale, pay for more training, better equipment, more gear, salary increases, specialized assignments, all of which will keep our officers here, which is what we want. Happy cops means happy citizens, means happy council, means happy staff. Let me be crystal clear, no one is blaming anyone who is here now. You weren't in your roles. You didn't do this. Let's make it right and make sure it doesn't happen again. I'll leave you with this anonymous quote because it resonated with me. Everyone makes mistakes, but only a person with integrity owns up to them. I work in a field where people lose everything in a moment, their homes, all of their possessions, sometimes their pets, sometimes their loved ones. But my point is that people make mistakes. I make mistakes. I'm human. My coworkers are human. If I make a mistake, I apologize and I do what I need to do to fix it. If I have a coworker who leaves the company and has made an error, I take over and I apologize and I fix it. End of story.
If I can have you wrap it up.
Yep, that's what needs to happen here. Apologize and fix it. End of story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Do we have any additional hands raised?
We do not have any other hands raised.
Okay, I would like to go back around to the council, see if any council has any further comments. Mr. Sandu, Vice Mayor. Your mics officer. There you go.
Sorry about that. There's a few things I'd like to point at. One thing on this whole conversation, I tell in the beginning, Mr. Hines, you know, he make a good report. He committed to, we're going to do the improvement. But I'm talking about like previous, if we're talking about one thing, I, I, I was led to remind, you know, the cancellation, the meeting. And I do understand on the report, they mentioned there was a, you know, ransomware. And I was there, there was a six, seven week, and then they said the COVID came in. We all understand COVID is a safety with everybody, but we are a service agency. We should not, we, we should make every effort to make the meeting, whatever we can, you know, follow the guidelines of, of, of the COVID-19 and whatever, there is citizen out there. I'm talking about, even look at all the offices in the county office, there is emergency office are open. They meet each other if they have to, but follow the guideline. But it is, it, you know, I'm talking about if we canceling the meeting without knowing, that's not the right way to do it. And the second thing I'm talking about are the detective position. After what will be, what was the department or council or whole city have kind of benefit? We have the position detective, we spending the money, but we are not, I, I, I need to be maybe later on. As you know, the chief, Brian Kalas might be explain why, why we was, was done that. And, and then the other thing, the third thing, I just want to make sure. I'm talking about all our same thing can be mentioned, we all are human beings. If we make a mistake, yes, make a mistake and do the right thing in the future. Again, I thank you for, Ms. Mr. Hines, the way he, he, he gave us that report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I know we're in the middle of council comments. Can I just respond to Mr., sorry, Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yes, please. And if you, if your response could also include, maybe where Brian can take over after you're finished, with maybe possibly adding some clarification about what this particular position is, we're talking about. I think the public is going to wonder what we're talking about.
Okay. Well, the first thing I wanted to mention is I had a conversation with the chair of the measure R committee and Ms. Martin last week and explained to them the findings of my report. The indication that I got from both of them was that it was an affirmative that they understood the report and my logic and my, and my findings and conclusions. Regarding this particular issue, there was a miscommunication between two departments during the development of the budget. This was an issue that was waiting for me as soon as I sat in my seat here on August 31st. And so I've been dealing with this issue during my whole tenure here at the city of Galt. Finally, over the Christmas holidays, while everybody was off, I had a quiet city hall and I was able to get into this code section. I can tell you going forward that we will be very clear, we will be very transparent about any spending from the measure R fund. We will, I will make sure that there are systems in place that allow the departments to communicate with the finance group and the finance group to communicate with the departments on any and all aspects of the departmental budget. So there are no surprises. And regarding this position, yeah, it was, it was the result of a miscommunication between departments. I'm going to fix that going forward. What I needed to take comfort in and what I needed to find out was, okay, is there a problem with the result of this action? And based on the city's adherence to the MOE thresholds for funding and positions, it's not a problem. It's just, we could have did it better and we could have made it clearer to the public and council as to what was going on. And we could have did a better job with the internal communications about the, about the budgets. And so, like I said, we'll be, we'll be correcting that going forward. And Brian can talk about the, the position itself. I'm sorry, Chief Kalanowski can talk about the position itself.
Brian's fine too. Thank you, Mr. Hines. So the position in question was an issue that former Chief Sockman became aware of with his conversations with Ms. Martin, who just spoke as a member of the measure R committee, and he spent some time in his last months up into when Lorenzo was coming on board, trying to address this issue. And so this fiscal year, that position that had been placed in detectives was moved out of detectives and placed back into patrol. So that's the department operating level information that I have. I got to defer to the city manager on some of the other dialogue that he had about that. We have a process in place at the departments for all our expenditures, whether they're for equipment or they're for personnel. And they're through a budgeting, you know, the budgeting process and expenditure process using POs if they're needed and using personnel change forms for when we allocate somebody to a division or to a location. As Mr. Hines said, we weren't aware of it, we didn't become aware of it until Ms. Martin made us aware of it. I've made some recommendations to the city manager about how the measure R committee changes could be beneficial and we're having ongoing discussions about that. I completely agree with Ms. Martin and some members of council about quarterly meetings of measure R, and I've been vocal about that. I, and the reason why I'm vocal about that is because as the chief, because I'm in that role now, I see the measure R committee as ambassadors to the community, explaining what we're doing with our programs and our vision for the future, so folks know where we're headed. And so they can articulate those to the community, a lot like the public safety committee. And we have that public safety committee every two months for the very same reason. So I think there's value in it. When, before Chief Sockman was here, I was very, I was, I was the point person for measure R. But Chief Sockman wanted to take some of those responsibilities over and I just shadowed behind him. But now I have an opportunity to take it and hold it and move forward with it. And so that's my commitment to you. And however, absent this position placement, I stand before, or sit before you, I guess, on Zoom and tell you the expenditures that we've made and the requests that we've made have all been vetted through the city attorney's office and through the city manager's office and approved by council. So no expenditures that we've done have been outside the bounds of what's been approved by this council. And I think Mr. Hines' approach about a separate item within the budget, calling out the expenditure plan for the year and, and perhaps some years out, so folks know what the revenues and expenditures are, so we're not running it out of money, is important for the community. And I think we also need to be sharing that with the committee before we roll it out to council. So those are my comments.
And Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make one more, a couple more comments. The measure R, the committee cancellation that occurred at the end of January of 2021 was my call. And, but we didn't do a good job communicating that to the members. And so I'll take responsibility for that. I canceled that meeting because I wanted time to get this measure R information out to council and also get ready for this particular meeting. And so, and I'll, and I also wanted to brief the chair of the measure R committee as well as Ms. Martin. And so there was a lot of preparation that I needed at the end of January, and that's why that meeting was canceled. Echoing what interim chief Kalanowski said, my preference is that the measure R committee, some see it as a finance committee, I see it as a programmatic committee. And while I understand that the numbers are a big part of what the measure R committee wants to see, I think they also want to see the programs that those dollars are funding and the impacts of those programs. And the effectiveness of those programs, because ultimately that's what gets to the public. And so the measure R committee, if you're listening out there, you will see more of a programmatic focus. Yes, you'll keep seeing the numbers, but I want at least half the conversation to be about these great programs that the Galt PD has that are being funded by this measure. Because I think it's worth the conversation and I think the committee really needs to know about it. And as interim chief mentioned, they are ambassadors to the, to the public and to the Galt community. And so when the community asks what's going on, I'd prefer, instead of a, well, we've got 1.3 million here and we're using this and we got all these dollars. I would prefer they be able to say that we've got these programs that are being funded out of measure R, which help X, Y and Z, and help us move forward as a community. So that's the role I see the measure R committee, we're still having those discussions internally. And so if the committee is listening, we'll have those discussions, I believe, at next week's meeting, which isn't canceled. Now, we called a special meeting of the measure R committee. They're supposed to meet quarterly. And so since we missed, since we missed the January meeting, we called a special meeting at the end of February. And so we'll make up for that, that January meeting.
Well, I appreciate, thank you for your comments and I appreciate you taking responsibility for the cancellation of the meeting. And, and for your comments, Lieutenant Chief Kalanowski. You're right, you know, the oversight committee, I, I don't want to ever belittle their position because although they don't have within the, the verbiage of the, of the measure, don't have any policymaking or, or decision-making involvement, they, they are the oversight and I, and I don't want to, I don't want to belittle that word in any shape or form. They are the watchdogs. And they are the ambassadors to the community. I, I'm appreciative of all your comments about how it's important that we have a good dialogue with the oversight committee and that they're pleased with the function of the, of what's going on and, and that they relay that to the public. And, and that they're, you know, they're our line of communication. I, I would like to ask Harriet just one question, just, just to address specifically because I didn't think it got addressed. And I think we've talked about it a lot, but I just want to be more pointed. In Ms. Martin's comment, she referred to the fact that it was illegal to use funding from the measure R to pay for. I think she might have been referring to maybe the money for the raises. I'm not sure which funding, or maybe it's the detective position. But she said what we were doing is illegal. You heard the comment, you heard her comment. Could you maybe just give your, your take on that?
I'm not aware of any expenditure that was illegal. I mean, I think that as Mr. Hines said, there may have been, you know, there may be a need for more. I mean, I think that as Mr. Heinz said, there may have been, you know, there may be a need for more transparency and more specificity. But I think that Measure R has two obligations. One is to have. The positions that were in the original plan and the other is to, and to maintain those positions. And the other one is to maintain funding above the level from two thousand seven, two thousand eight, which. You know, Mr. Heinz is called maintenance of effort. And I think beyond that. Expenditures have to be consistent with council action and, and all the money has to be spent on police services. As delineated in Measure R. I said, beyond that, I, you know, and I think that all the expenditures meet those requirements. So I don't see anything that's illegal about the requirement, about the expenditures.
Thank you. From a, from a legal perspective, would, do you think there would be any advantage? This is an idea popped in my head. Do, do you think there would be? It would be an advantage or beneficial, I don't know, I'm struggling for the word I'm looking for, to maybe. At some point, the council maybe revisit the language to clean it up, to just make it more definitive, because I feel like. I just hate to have another council have the same discussion in two, three years from now. I, I feel like there's just gray areas and, and it seems like the council, according to what I've read. The council has the authority to do everything within the measure, even abolish it. The only thing we can't do is raise the sales tax. That we're collecting either up or down, but we have, we have a lot of latitude, everything else. Do you think that would be beneficial to maybe do so? What would be your opinion on that?
So it may be benef- so, so the council can make modifications so long as, as you said, you don't increase the sales tax. You cannot change the purpose of the sales tax. You may be able to adopt. I would say implementing regulations for, to implement the expenditures. Those would last as long as the current, you know, until a council wanted to amend them. So I think they might be guidance for future councils, but I don't think they're going to bind future councils, because as you know. In the absence of a voter-approved measure where the voter says you cannot change this. All ordinances of the city can be changed by three members of the council once they go on an agenda. So it may be important to go through and have a general understanding of how. The provision works and how you're going to implement it, which would help future councils. You know, as they go through and do it, but future councils could change it within the scope that I just talked about, like. The actual purposes, the amount, those types of things cannot be changed because the voters put them there.
Right. Yeah, I was just specifically speaking, just a couple of points that seem to be the hangup where there's. Different interpretations of different language and I think just maybe just a couple of extra bits of language would be very, would just add a lot more clarity or whatever. I just. Again, I'm only thinking, this is just an idea and, and I don't know if the council would support something like that taking place, but. You know, maybe that would be something we should talk about and, and work towards, you know, over this next year. It could be just a brief. Sit down with a couple of council members, maybe, maybe it could be an ad hoc committee. Maybe, you know, Mr. Papinow or Mr. Lozano could sit on that because they have law enforcement experience. And of course, city attorney would be involved in that and sit down and just kind of go over the language and say, you know, what are the sticking points here? What are, what seems to be some of the gray muddy areas? That people are caught up on and, and just add some clarity to that, so that we don't have these discussions every couple of years or ever. I don't know if that would be.
As I said, I think the council can do that. I just, I, I, but what the council I don't think can do is. Is have your interpretation be permanent forever, right? So I think, I'm not saying it's not, wouldn't be helpful. I'm just saying it wouldn't be any more permanent than any other actions that the council takes.
Does, does any of my fellow council members have any input on the discussion? I want to make sure everybody has their fair share of. Input here, anybody? Mr. Papinow, go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, as this item is an overview, I think we've gained a lot of information about Measure R. And how it works or how it's supposed to work. I agree with the city manager interpretation and the legal position that, you know, this was not illegal. I think what our hangup is, is it, you know, I'm new here, but I think it's apparently a lack of robust discussion. And actually between the Measure R Committee and the council and, you know, everybody having a clear understanding of exactly. What these items are before we, you know, approve them, take a vote on them, whatever. So I think that, you know, is the, is my biggest takeaway here. I don't know that Measure R per se is broken. I think it does need to have the flexibility, you know, an example being in oh seven, oh eight. If we had, if this had been written, you know, so specific as to what things it could get. And now somebody said, hey, body cameras, well, those weren't a heard of thing back then. But, you know, law enforcement's got to be progressive. And our, our last chief and our current interim chief are doing a good job of keeping up with that because. Speaking candidly, historically, that was not done here. So, you know, I am. I don't have any problem with the specific issue that's being brought up here, but I am eager to see. A robust discussion and a clear, specific budget discussion related to the Measure R funds. That's all I have.
Thank you, council member. Any other council member comment? Mr. Vandenberg?
Sorry, struggling with the pad. It won't seem to accept my finger for some reason. So. I would like maybe a little clarification on what can and cannot be done, because it appears to me as I sit here right now is that. We cannot or should not go back to the old budget and change it because it's already been approved by city council. It's, it's kind of a done deal unfortunately. It's, it's kind of like whatever choice you make is a bad one. Can the detective that was paid for questionably? Can that be, can those funds be put back? Is there extra funds in the police budget because positions haven't been filled not to affect the, the general budget? Would everybody be okay with that, you know? And more, maybe most importantly, you know, I'm, I'm really glad Measure R Committee brought this forward. I'm glad we're having this conversation. It's really what it's all about. And secondly, that. None of the money was spent on a vacation. It was, all of the money was spent to protect the citizens of Galt and that's the primary goal. So can anybody ask or answer those two questions they had about, you know, the funds being replaced and or how?
Well, I'll, I'll be happy to say that. Well, that, that expenditure plan is gone. Now, those dollars are spent and that year has been audited and the auditors found no problem. And so just, just deciding to transfer dollars from the general fund to Measure R, there's no justification for it. There's no proper justification for it other than an opinion. And so, and that's what I wanted to confirm with my report. And so while council has the ability to move these dollars around, again, there's no justification for it. Even though, you know, there are those in, there are, you know, there's this minority in the community who thinks it's justified. Based on budgets, governmental budgets, the audit that took place, which found no issue. And the fact that this budget is already gone, it's two years in the rearview mirror. Finding justification for that transfer, that's going to be hard. And we'll have to look at whether the general fund can even afford such a transfer. Because the Measure R Fund is actually probably in, I, I'm not going to say it's in better shape, but it's in good shape.
The bud- the budget moving forward, we will not approach the issues in Measure R the same manner. Technically that we're behind on that as well, right?
We will, we will be very transparent and I think that some of the items that. Myself and the chief are working on, I think you'll all be pleased. I think the community will be pleased. And I believe these are the kinds of things that Measure R was intended for. And so I'm looking forward to getting those things in front of you all and. And but yeah, I think we should just move forward. Again, I did this work. I wrote this memo just to. Give myself some comfort that we, even though a mistake was made, that. We still had the authority to do that, to make that move and we did. I, it's not, it's not a move that I'm going to propose in the future. Because there are other things that we could spend Measure R dollars on. But in that particular instance, it's, it's, it, there was no problem with the move. It was just. I just didn't like the fact that it wasn't transparent and, and the council at that time wasn't made fully aware. Of the implications of that. And, and, and based on my conversations with the former chief. He wasn't made fully aware that these things are done. So those are the things that. Those are the elements that irritate me the most. So I'm not worried about the dollars and. The legitimacy of the spending, because I think that's, we, 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 we spent those dollars the right way. It was a police expense and, but my issue is with the internal miscommunication and that's, that's. That's something I'll deal with.
Something I'm very concerned about, you know, I would not want to set, set a precedent. That something that could be interpreted and why I'm a fan of changing, perhaps amending, I should say. Measure like the mayor suggested, I'm a fan of that, but I would never want to set a precedent where money is spent outside of the intent. And now it's, that will be standard practice.
Not as long as I'm here. It will, it will be spent within the intent and I have defined the intent with the memo. And so all spending, all spending proposals that we bring before the council will be within. The Measure R guidelines and not without. In other words, those seven positions will always be funded. That five point four two two million will always be there in the police, in the Galt PD's budget.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a point of interpretation and.
Understood.
It's, it's an endless conversation and why I'm a fan, why I'm a fan of maybe amending it to finalize it.
Okay, as long as those amendments don't restrict. The flexibility that we currently enjoy.
I, I, well, I agree with what Mr. Councilman Papinow said, that that's, that's, you made a great point about. You know, the body cams, you got to think ahead in the future. That's, that's something perhaps the original drafters of the measure didn't consider enough of.
Yes, you've got body cams, you've got MDCs, you've, you've got new cars, you've got. I mean, it's an, it's an, it's an endless expenditure cycle and I don't mean to be flippant about it, but. You know, this is our most expensive department and in any city you'll find, it's the most expensive department. We, we, you know, a good city rotates those police vehicles every three years. I don't think we do that here because we can't afford that. Meanwhile, there's one point three million dollars sitting in the Measure R Fund. And so, you know, the MDCs that the, the police are currently using. We're actually having a meeting on the MDCs, I believe, tomorrow. The mobile data, mobile data computers, sorry about that. We've got to make sure that they've got the best that we can offer. And that's what those dollars are there for. And I understand your concern about what's, what's, what's happened in the past. But my bottom line is I got to get this money into the Galt PD for the things that they need.
Thank you. Mr. Heinz, I, I think, I think that when I was suggesting clarity on some stuff, I was definitely not going to suggest any language that would be restrictive. I'm not going to say we can't do this or can't do that. I was looking at more about enhancing such as when you talk about officer retainment or acquisition. Well, obviously, using incremental salary increases is falling under that, but that's where I think it would be maybe beneficial. If we could consider language that says officer retainment to include, you know, salary increase, you know, I mean, if you just added some language and it's not restricting us. It actually would just add more, actually allows liberties, to be honest with you. And, and things like where, the one I brought up where it says. You know, the current expenditure plan where it could say the current expenditure plan and then referencing the two thousand seven, two thousand eight. That's the kind of stuff I'm talking about where it's, it's adding clarity on a couple of things that seem to be the sticking points over and over. Not, not, not adding language to like, put us, back us into a corner where we can't buy body cameras or anything like that. I think the equipment thing's pretty straightforward. I think that's, you know. So, I mean, I don't know if this could be a discuss, I would like to see that discussion. I think this is a compromise between all the people that are dissatisfied with. Maybe how the interpretation has come forward. I think this is a compromise where we can come together and say, okay, well, let's, let's clean up the language then. So there's no miscommunication on this anymore. I don't know if there's council enough support to do that. I don't think it requires us to, to beat the horse to death. Over and over. I, I think we can move on to the next item here pretty quick, but I think if, if we could possibly talk about that, maybe we could talk about that in the next meeting. At the. I would love to see your ideas about, you know, chief's ideas about the additional things he wants to, to bring to the, to the committee. I would love to hear those ideas presented at that committee, which I think.
Those, those things will be, they'll be presented during the, the budget process. And what I would suggest is that. Immediately prior to the budget process, maybe we have the robust conversation that council member Papinow. Mentioned and maybe it's time for a joint session between the Measure R Committee and the city council. That's a possible. That's a possible conversation there and it's just, that's all we're going to discuss is Measure R. But the, the, the proposals that I'm speaking of are still being baked right now. And so they'll be ready for prime time as we get into the budget. But we, because we want to make sure that we can give you the best proposals that we can. And so we're, we're still working with, on those internally, but you will see them this spring.
Okay. Vice Mayor, did you have a comment? I've seen your microphone off.
Yeah, I have a comment about whatever you was thinking. And I, I just not want to be anything change whatever previous council adopted it. But my thing is, is, is kind of if there is anything is not clear, there is certain thing is not clear if. We will be like in future any discussion to bring that clear language, so it will be no conflict in, in the future. But I will suggest if mayor and city manager will discuss in this issue, if you have come something in a next agenda item. Or whenever, so I, I like to.
Our, our next agenda is, is pretty stacked, so I would suggest we push this off until the end of March or beginning of April.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. If that would be fine, Lorenzo, we can have a discussion about. Later day when it's appropriate. I just wanted it to have a, I want the conversation.
It'll happen. And, and tonight's discussion was just to give you the overview. Now, you know, we're, we're going to come back and we're going to talk about it a little more. But at least now, everyone at least has sort of the base interpretation, at least from the city manager's perspective.
Okay. All right, well, since this is.
Councilmember Lozano has a question.
Lozano, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Just, just a couple of comments after the public comment. I just want to clarify something. This is, I, I would agree with Ms. Martin that. This is the first time I've heard the term. I'm sorry. It's a, yeah, first time I've heard, heard that actual term used. But I have heard the, the, the definition of that be used over several. Several conversations with prior city managers and chief, police chief and, and whatnot. And, and I think that's kind of the basis for, for this measure. As it relates to talking about clarifying the measure. I, I, maybe I just totally misunderstood what the intent is here, but are we talking about changing the language of the law that was passed by the voters? By adding clarifying language, because that I might have a, an issue with. But if it's something short of that, I, I think that it would be good to have that clarifying conversation. About, about what the language means.
I think to clarify what I was suggesting was not to actually change anything that was being voted upon. I think we were just looking for more clarity. On a couple, I think the language, there's a couple of words that are just very confusing and, and lack interpretation and. The city council does have the liberty, the latitude under the ordinance to do anything, even abolish it as a matter of fact. I mean, actually, it's pretty, pretty broad. Just we don't have the, the, we can't, we can't specify the money be spent anywhere else except for police services. And we can't alter the tax up or down. Harriet can jump in here if she, if I got that wrong, but we do have the latitude, I think, to just. Clean up some language. It's all I'm suggesting, just some language cleanup, not, not change anything that says dramatically that we're altering what the, what the voter's intent was, to be honest with you.
Yeah, and, and I just want to point that out because, you know, my conscience jumps in there and says, well, the people, you know, this was the. The word for word that was put in front of the people in two thousand eight that voted on this and I would certainly not want to. To make any significant alterations to that. It's just kind of, we may be able to do it legally, but. Uh, it's just kind of, uh, we may be able to do it legally, um, but uh I, I just Well, I think about that one for a little bit, quite honestly, but it's, it's, it's all good. I think it's a, I think we've had a healthy just uh conversation about this. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hines, for, again, for the, the analysis. Um, and the, the work that you put into it over the last several months. Um, I want to just point out one thing that, uh, one additional item is that um our graffiti abatement program for, for the public, uh, if you don't know, is second to none. And oh my goodness, uh, I'll, I'll tell you, I have reported graffiti, uh, not, not so much in the near uh recent past. Uh, but certainly, you know, four or five years ago, uh, and even, even before that. Um, and it's gone within hours sometimes. And so uh this, this measure has really done some good things. And it does specifically point out graffiti abatement in the, in the law. And so I, 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 it has been awesome. Now, to uh Councilmember Papino's uh point in that, um, you know, six, seven years ago, graffiti abatement was a huge thing. Uh, and and took many, many resources. Today, not as much. And, you know, I think it's just following crime trends and things like that. Uh, but, but I think we, we need to have the ability uh as a city, uh, as long as we're not spending the money outside of the police department to be able to, to provide those, those services to the community and the equipment to our staff who, who deserve it and, and, and should have the best equipment and training uh possible moving forward. So that's all I had. Um, I thank you again, staff, uh, for, for putting this together. And uh, and I'm uh looking forward to moving on to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano. We have no further comment from anyone on this item. We can, this is a non-action item, so we can go ahead and move on. Are we good? Anybody? Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to uh item C one, which we uh rearranged the order for those that didn't follow that. Uh, subject is the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Fiscal Year Annual Report. Mr. Hines. I think, oh, there it goes.
Hi, I, um, it says Mr. Hines, but I thought that Chief Kalanowski would be uh presenting this one.
Chief? Okay, I can do that on the fly?
Or, or uh our finance director, Claire Tyson, can also present.
I, no, no, no problem. I was not prepared, so I do apologize. Okay, before you counsel is the um twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen annual report, which is some of the dialogue that we just discussed it at length regarding the detective's position. This um item was taken to um the Oversight Board in August of this last year and approved with some um edits by and recommendations by Ms. Martin. But it was approved by the subcommittee um and sent to um council for overall approval. But as you know, there was discussions and issues that Mr. Hines was um trying to address in the interim. And, and so this is why it was delayed in getting to you. So um we asked Mr. Cooley, who is the chair, if he would be willing to present this item tonight. Unfortunately, he was not available. So on behalf of the committee, staff is presenting it um to the council. If council wants more specifics, I'm happy to provide it. But the details for the finances are on the bottom of page two of the Oversight Committee Report, which is the audited financial statement.
I have, I do have a question. Um, actually, I'll, I'll let the council go first. Uh, you're, you're finished, that's, that's it for you, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, make sure for time. Um, Vice Mayor Sandu, um, do you have any questions on this item at this point?
You know, I do not have any question. We already discussed enough uh regarding this uh report. Am I willing to accept that?
Councilmember Papinell.
I don't have any questions about the report.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Uh, just one quick question. I thought it was asked, but I'll ask again. I was under the understanding that the Measure R Committee did not vote on this. But it is clear that there's a recorded vote for this item from the Measure R Committee approving what we've re, what, what has been given us in the packet.
Yes.
That is correct. They met in August. I
Claire, do you have the specific date in August that we met on this item?
August twenty third.
Okay. And that's where the item was heard by the committee and approved by the committee uh with some changes made by Ms. Martin.
And that was uh concerning the detective that was in question?
Was concerning
Issue came up? Yeah, it was regarding the audit report, the question about the detective's position um was not a part of that discussion.
Okay. So that's, then this is a past tense budget, so it's already been voted on by the city council? That was my understanding from our previous conversation.
That is correct.
So the budget item was, yeah, I'm sorry, Claire.
That's okay. If, if that's true, why are we voting twice?
What you're voting on is to accept the report that the committee is required to provide to council.
For the, for a two-year-old budget that was already voted on?
For the annual report. So the annual report lists the budget as compared to the actual that is audited by the auditors and then provides that result for you.
Okay, and then just, just one last point, uh, just a point of note, I should have mentioned it before. Terry Parker, you know, uh, had anticipated that there would be another resource officer in school. And when she inquired about it a few years back, she was instructed that or told that there was uh no funds in, not enough funds in the account to pay for another resource officer. That sounds like that was incorrect from, there's been a substantial balance for a while now.
So we've had, we've always had one position funded in Measure R for the SRO program. And then for a number of years, we had an additional grant position where the grant paid for a set dollar amount over each year, over three years. And the Measure R and school district paid the difference. And currently, the second SRO position is a split between both districts and the Measure R Fund for the second position. So there is funding um coming from more than one source for the second SRO. And we do have currently two SROs in the schools.
But no plans for a third and there's not necessarily funding for it because of the way it's funded?
There's um no plans for a third. That is correct. And the department has other identified priorities above adding an additional SRO.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Councilmember Lozano.
Um, yeah, I just, I just had um a question and it actually um has to do with um the actual report from the committee, the fiscal year annual report. They only met one time in two thousand nineteen. Is that, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. And we're gonna
So you have to, so remember, part of the issue we have in the delayed report is in part due to the data collapse that we had with the um. So we had some problems and then we had delays in the audit. And, you know, just then it was a domino effect. So there were some problems related to that.
And then, then there was also a delay because um we were missing committee members, so we didn't have a full committee.
Yeah, we were missing like almost the entire committee, if I remember. We had four absence, four vacancies, correct?
Something like that. And so
Yeah, we had a number of vacancies, yes.
Yeah, so this August meeting occurred right after council approved those committee members.
Okay, and um as relates to uh Councilmember Vanderburg's question about additional SROs. Um, uh, how many, how many students are, are to school, current school resource officers providing service to? Ballpark figure, do we, do we know?
I, I would be truly guessing, so I do not know. I know we're providing it to both high schools, obviously the middle school and the elementary schools. So I don't know what the student count is total.
Okay.
I can get that for you and provide it to the city manager who can disseminate that information.
I, I can, I can figure that out. It's, it's not a big deal. My, my point is, is that, that's quite a hefty SRO program having to, for, for what I believe is probably you know, less than, probably less than twenty thousand students.
Oh, far less, the twenty thou, oh, yeah, it's far less.
Yeah, that's, you know, one, one for every ten thousand or so is, is doing really well. So uh that was my point. And so um, yeah, nothing else. Again, I appreciate the, the report and um, and I have no other questions.
Mr. Tyson?
I, I apologize. Um, Chief and I misspoke. It's October twenty third.
So I thought, I was gonna say that because I had already looked at that. I was confused with August. Or the, yes, you guys said August initially.
What, did we not, Claire, did we meet in August and again in October?
I think the particular committee that was in uh in place for this audited financial met one time and it was in October twenty third. So we met again since then we've met. So you are correct.
I see. Okay, all right, thank you. That's what happens when you get behind, we're behind. I lose my ears.
So it was brought to my attention uh by, by Ms. Martin through, through a, a, an email that um, that the concerns that she had found were brought forward on the meeting of October, because that was the only meeting he had. Or actually, they were discovered shortly after, I guess it was after. Um, because she said she was not able to bring these, this item before the rest of her, her members because there was never another meeting before that. The January meeting got canceled. Um, she, it was explained to me that uh she had addressed some, there were some questions brought to, to you, Claire. And I, I guess to just out, out into the public, I, I don't know specifically to who, but I think you were one of them. And, and then you said, you know, I'll get back to the information. I think there was some exchange of information. But it's being relayed to me also by the chair, Mr. Cooley. And again, I just want to add clarification here that, that they did not sign off on the report, that they were like not happy with what they got. I just want to be clear because, again, it's kind of interesting because we don't have the, we don't have the Oversight Committee here presenting this. I mean, they were clearly here presenting it. It would be no question that they're obviously presenting and, and giving it their blessing. But we have staff presenting it. I know that he was asked and he couldn't be here. But I, I, I was, I was shown an email that he wasn't happy with, he had concerns about the report. Blessing guy. So I, I just want to make sure we have absolute no question that the Oversight Committee, because this is their job and this is their report. We're not talking about the other item, but this is their report. And they're putting their name on it and their reputation on it and, and they're on it. I, I want to be absolutely clear that they have, there's no question that they have consented their approval of this report that's being presented tonight. Can someone answer that for me?
There's no question. Um, they met, so this particular group doing this annual report met on August twenty sixth, reviewed the audited financials, asked questions that were responded to, um, asked for additional edits, which were done and distributed to the entire committee. At the committee meeting said, as long as those edits were in there, they approved it. They saw the, the, the report again afterwards. Everybody got an email of it. There were no further revisions to it.
Okay.
So.
And we'll be happy to provide any and all of that documentation to the council, including the edits that were requested, the original report that was provided, the emails, sending out that information to the account, to the members. And we'll also, I'm sure there's some minutes of that, that meeting as well. We'll be happy to provide all that information. I'm a little surprised that Mayor, you got that information because I talked to both Mr. Cooley and Ms. Martin last week. And neither of them indicated that they had an issue with this report. So I'm a little surprised.
As I am, and I, and I, I wish, you know, I wish that the, the committee was here presenting the report because then it would be no question at all.
Well, I'll definitely bring it up to them when I meet with them in about a week and a half.
Okay.
Okay.
So um If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Vanderburg.
No, it sounds like a, a little like both parties are right. Uh, there's only one meeting and they asked for changes, but they didn't actually have a second meeting. But they didn't disagree with the emails, but there was no official vote, correct?
No, there was an official vote. At a committee meeting, you can take an item and say, I'd like this edit. And as long as I have that edit, we all approve it. That's what occurred. So the approval occurred. Those edits were minor.
Right, right, but it's just not at, like physically at that meeting. It was that agreed to uh edit, as long as it was met, it was okay at some time in the future.
And they approved that, yes.
Correct, right, right. Okay, I just want to, thank you.
I, I would only like to add one thing, I, I, just for future, just because, just because this just concerns me about that. I, I would, I would like to just strongly insist that we, we, we adhere uh, you know, absolutely to protocol where the committee themselves or the chair of the committee would obviously be the most ideal, could present next time. And if they can't, if they're not able to make it, then I know that, and I, I know this is a special situation where this report has been kicked down the road so far already. And I get that, you know, that you want to get this done. But I'm just saying for future, I, I, I am not going to feel real comfortable uh going forward um unless it's presented, which is what it outlines specifically in the, in the ordinance that they're going to present. So I, I think we, you know, and I know Cooley could make it. I know that, uh, I heard that as well. But if we can just make sure that that's the case next time, or else we're gonna have to reschedule.
So Mayor, I, I will guarantee you that uh the chair of the committee will be here to present the nineteen twenty report when that is presented to council. And if he can't be here, then another member of the committee will be here.
And that would be fine as well.
We'll keep putting it off until they can make it.
Well, hopefully, you know, one of five can make it. I mean, you know.
Yeah, well, like I said, I, I just wanted to give you the list that I'll go through to make sure that they're here.
Do I have any, um, actually, do we have any public comment before I start wrapping this item up here? You have any written comment, Ms. Hubert?
No written comment.
Ms. Rodiker, do we have any hands raised online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay, any further counsel comment? Nobody. Okay, well, if no further counsel comment, then I will uh entertain a motion to receive, or actually, I'm sorry, to approve the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Fiscal Year Report twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen annual report as presented. Do you have a motion on the floor?
I'll move to approve the report. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Papinell, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Hubert?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yes.
Councilmember Papinell?
Hi.
Councilmember Vanderburg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
No. Item passes four to one. Thank you for all the information, everybody. I appreciate your insight. Moving on to the next item, public comment, item D. Ms. Hubert, if you would please read our statement.
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. These public comments, the public comment section is for the city council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash U S zero two web dot zoom dot U S forward slash J forward slash eight seven six one four 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 five one four six webinar ID. one four 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 five one four six webinar ID eight seven six one four 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 five one four six.
Thank you. Do we have any written comment?
I have one written comment. This is from Deneen Felix. I am sure you are aware that returning our kids to in-person education in both the elementary and high school district has been a prolonged disappointing experience for our community. There are some families that wish to remain with distance learning the remainder of this academic, academic school year, but most families do not. Contacts made with, contracts made with teachers unions in our districts have been disadvantageous for the students and have lengthened their time spent at home, isolated and frustrated with distance learning. I'm aware that the city, Galt City Council is unable to make a difference in this area, but I thought you might, may be interested in knowing what is happening in Galt youth, youth and families. In addition, youth sports have been negatively impacted. Organized youth sports have been given guidance, guidance to follow by the California Department of Public Health. This guidance designates which organized sport can be played depending on which color tier our county falls under. Movements such as Let Them Play California have been very active in requesting to have these color tiers modified or eliminated so that all sports can be played this academic school year. Multiple studies support the return of youth sports in addition to in-person education. This is where the city council can help our youth. Our local parks removed basketball hoops and volleyball nets in March twenty twenty due to COVID nineteen. I asked our Parks and Recreation Director when golf parks can reinstall basketball hoops and volleyball nets so that kids can practice their sport. I was told that they will not be reinstalled until those sports can be played under the organized youth sports guidance put out by the California Department of Public Health. I also contacted the Sacramento County Department of Health Services and was told that taking down hoops and nets at basketball courts or volleyball nets was not required by the county. Therefore, if Galt was not required by the county to remove the nets and we are not using the park to play organized sports as defined by the CBDH guidelines, then why not reinstall them right now? Have you walked by a park, especially in the afternoons? Have you seen the congregation of youth? Some are young and simply enjoying the benefits of the playground structures, which are thankfully not prohibited. Others are teenage groups just hanging out, but some are not necessarily partaking in healthy habits. I have seen engraved names and profanity on park benches, her bathroom doors being kicked and kids fighting within and smelled the aroma of many substances illegal at their age. Please consider returning the basketball hoops and volleyball nets as a start to getting our kids back to physical activity and sports practices. I would like to end with a statement from Governor's office in response to the Let Them Play California rally held on Thursday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-one at the state Capitol. At present, outdoor practice, training, skill building and physical conditioning are permitted for all sports statewide. That's all I have for written.
And that was from who? Can you please state the name again?
Deneen Felix.
Felix. Thank you, Ms. Felix, for your comment. Do we have any further written comment beyond that?
No, I do not.
Do we have any hands raised online, Ms. Roddicker?
We do have a couple of hands raised. The first one will be Annette Kuns. Annette, if you will unmute your mic. You have five minutes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Great. Good evening. My name is Annette Kunsy and I'm here today on behalf of a number of concerned citizens. There's currently a crisis in Galt and we wanted to make sure you were aware as our city's leaders. The crisis is the lack of in-person education, well-rounded education that involves physical activity, peer relationships, impromptu affectionate interactions, the lack of which is resulting in long-term damage to our city's children and eventually our overall city's future. While some may be performing okay in virtual school and will continue to have that option, there are so many who are struggling in the current educational environment or simply not thriving to their fullest potential. A leader once told me, when evaluating a course of action, there's often no one perfect answer. You must identify where there is the greatest risk. So I would proffer that the greatest risk right now is to all those who are suffering because of the lack of an in-person education option. I hear stories of parents who, because they have no other choice, must leave their child to be a teacher, parent, student, caretaker. Many may say, well, then just send your children to private school. And while that may be an option for some, there's not a realistic option en masse in Galt. One reason because of the financial burden and another being the public schools essentially have a monopoly in the city. And I heard one mom who said, well, she can afford one child to go to private school, the other she cannot. So she's left with the emotional burden of having to effectively choose between her children's future with Solomonic wisdom. Or another family whose children are suffering from depression and anxiety and turning to unhealthy choices. A dark existence that only can be worn heavily by a parent. And another who cannot afford, who cannot effectively compete for college scholarships that would potentially change their whole future. All of these risks are highly probable, impending and imminent. And our children and parents are feeling very forsaken right now by their leaders as they are forced to navigate the struggle on their own. They're growing more resentful and desperate each day as they watch your children suffer. And any parent, family member or friend knows that watching your own child suffer is one of the life's greatest and emotionally provoking challenges. So I'm here today to ask you to join our cause. While you're not the governing board for education, we do believe you have the influence to take active steps on behalf of children in your community for which you lead. Whether that's by helping the schools clear paths, pleading and pressing through your channels to legislators and other leaders to reevaluate the tiers that are keeping our schools closed or to just cry from the rooftop, rooftops that this is not acceptable because our children are too important. And the wisest leaders and scientists are now openly recognizing the severe detrimental effects of closed schools. And please push ultimately and quickly for a full reopening five days a week, similar to what we see in affluent communities. Income base and location alone should not really be the determining factors for such a benefit. So what has started out as a petition, which was previously sent to you, is now becoming a local movement. Our parents are currently banding together in purpose and preparing for a rally this coming weekend, Saturday, ten AM to twelve noon at the Littleton Center. We also invite you cordially to join us in that rally to show your support for Galt's children. I would also like to mention another famous leadership quote. You can choose comfort or you can choose courage, but you cannot choose both. I ask you here today to choose courage and to stand with your populace. Lastly, I leave you with a compelling visual, a girl, a young teenager who wants nothing more than to just be a teenager. She gets up in the morning, being the oldest in the home and cooks breakfast for her siblings. She wakes them up, tries to get them to cooperate and come to breakfast. But they are younger siblings and react the way younger siblings do with an older sibling. By the time she gets settled, she can finally turn to her own classes. Midway between her classes, she can see her siblings are not working on their schoolwork. She turns off her camera to try to get them back on track, meanwhile missing an important part of her lesson and leaving her teacher wondering why she turned off her camera. She returns and realizes she's lost in the discussion and too embarrassed to ask a question and may even be admonished for turning off her camera. The teen, teacher cannot see the worry and insecurity on her face or feel her energy because she's just a small box on a screen. She starts to worry she's going to disappoint her parents and her teachers. She's always been a good student. Her stomach turns and she tries once again to settle her siblings before she needs to make them lunch. Feeling exhausted, she wants nothing more than to be a regular teenager, hanging out and laughing with her friends and gaining confidence from performing well in school. She starts to not eat and constantly worry and her heart grows more heavy by the day. So I ask you, what does this do to a child academically, physically, socially, emotionally? That's just one story. Now multiply that by a hundred, each with a very human story about how they're being impacted. This is what makes the lack of an in-person education option a true crisis in our community and a need for the sense of urgency. I leave you with that visual as you decide how fervently to pursue this issue to the very, very best of your ability. Thank you for your time, Ms. Hubert.
Do we have any additional hands raised for us?
We do. Our next speaker is Mr. Bob Bellier.
Mr. Bellier, go ahead.
One moment, let me allow him. There we go. Mr. Bellier, if you will unmute your mic.
Okay, I did. You guys can hear now.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to thank you for your invitation and to, and giving me the honor to lead the pledge of allegiance tonight for the city council. It means a heck of a lot to me. Secondly, I want to thank, I want to thank Councilman Lozano specifically for his appointment of Robert Wilson to the Commission on Aging for the City of Galt. And thirdly, I, I have been in communication with Mayor Farmer and Councilman Lozano as well as Director Solis of Parks and Rec and Ms. Lopez is his administrative director. With regards to the vaccinations of the elderly and specifically those that are residing in our senior care homes and the concerns that I've been hearing over the past several weeks and actually some, a couple of months now as to access to get that vaccination. I, I kind of recommended or brought up an idea that if there is a possibility that the county can provide or somebody can provide mobile units to go to those homes. In fact, the, the managers of those homes are willing to turn their community center, if they have one, into a facility, a facility to admit, to administer those vaccinations. I understand there's a shortage in the county of Sacramento. I'm just asking to, for you guys to, for the council to continue to entertain the idea and not forget the elderly that are concerned about getting vaccinations and so on in the future. So that I can, so, so that that word can get out once you guys, there's some kind of resolution to the problem. So the word can get out to the community, specifically with the quarterly newsletter or even a, a, an additional newsletter to bring that information out to the community so that everybody in the, knows what's going on, going on with regard to this COVID nineteen vaccination program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bellier.
Thank you, Mr. Bellier. I have no further hands raised.
Okay. If we have no further hands raised, I want to address some of the comments real quick. First off, Mr. Heinz, I know that you've had a conversation and I, and I, and I know if Mr. Bellier's been reaching out to Mr. Lozano, I'm sure he's been very receptive as well on this that I, I've been asking a lot, you know, as the county, what, you know, what can the city do? I, I get a lot of emails from several seniors, you know, concerned with that they're, they're, they're home, you know, homebound, they're not, they use public transit usually and so they're not doing that right now and, and they're worried about, how do I get vac, how do I get vaccinated? And how's that going to work? And is, is the city going to help facilitate anything like this? Do we have any updated information at all, Mr. Heinz, on anything that would retain to this at all?
I will be presenting that when my COVID report comes up.
Okay. Okay. So that's coming up on our agenda soon. So those of you who are watching, you can listen and we'll have some information. Mr., Mr. Solis, if you're on the line, could you address the question of the public comment about the basketball hoops and the nets and things? Is that, is there a reason why we still have those down?
Yeah, I'm asking Tina to put up this chart. This is a chart that is put up by the state of California. As you can see, until we get into the orange tier, outdoor events such as basketball and volleyball are not allowed. If we left those basketball hoops and nets up, people would play and then would be an enforcement issue. So we, back in March, we, we removed them. You know, if you wanted them put backed up, we could, but then it becomes an enforcement issue and all the calls received for kids playing basketball.
Okay. Well, thank you for sharing that information with us. I know that I'm looking at this list and it just, you know, it would be a whole nother discussion to decide why some things are in some, you know, color and some are not, but I am not going to go down that rabbit hole at this moment, but thank you for, for answering and addressing that quickly.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to add that over here in the column where for the purple tier, that's, there's a pretty long list of, of things that are available for physical activity. And I realize, I, I realize archery may not be a, a, a big thing here in Galt and it might be. But there's still golf, there's still roller skating, there's still martial arts, there's still pickleball, there's still running. So there's still some options there outside of basketball and volleyball that will allow folks to stay active.
Yeah. Thank you. And I, and I agree. It's just too bad that I noticed soccer's also in the higher tier that we're not in yet and that's also a, a big sport in Galt as well. So unfortunately, you can clearly see that the sports that are allowed are tied to social distancing and, and some that are that. So unfortunately, although I, I do don't fully agree with those, I understand and I understand the city has policy. We have to adhere to. The last comment that was about the schools and, and although Ms. Kunsy was correct, we don't have the authority to do that. I, I, I applaud her courage and all the parents that I've been hearing a lot about this. I don't envy the school boards at this moment, but I can tell you as far as what I do know, I've been watching the school board meetings. And from my recollection, the high school, I believe, is looking to transition back to at least part-time school by the end of February. There was, there's ongoing discussions about that at the moment. I don't have an update for you about the elementary, but I do know that it is, it is definitely a discussion in the community at all levels and I, I share your frustration because this one here, I, I spoke to someone today who had seven children. Five of them are school age and he is a single parent, a father of seven children. And he was telling me how difficult it is to have five children on Zoom. He has to put them in different rooms and it's just, they, they don't, it's just, it's a total mess and they're not learning well. And it's just, he's just very frustrated and I, I, I just, my heart goes out to everyone who's got young kids. I don't anymore, but I, I know it's, what you guys are just going through is difficult. So I applaud your efforts. I would say just keep dialogue open with your, your, your elected school board members and, and make your voice known at that level. And anyway, the, the city of Galt can support their, their efforts. We obviously are here to try to do that in, in a safe manner. So I just want to throw that out there to answer your comment, Ms. Ms. Kunsy. Does any other, other council have any comments they would like to state regarding any of our public comment before we move on? No? Okay. All right. Thank you for everybody's comment. We'll move on to our next item. Item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions and committees. We'll start with our vice mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Mr. Mayor, nothing to report. There was, the meeting was canceled transportation.
Councilmember Papinow.
Nothing to report. I haven't had any meetings since our last.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Nothing to report as well.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Lozano.
Yes, just real briefly, we had a SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting on February eighth and went over kind of the opening of the, that committee for the year. Talked about the committee charge and some transit representation issues and getting that all squared away. Advocacy and then of course housing, which is a big, a big topic this year. So other than that, I mean, it was pretty light agenda. We do have a SECOG general board meeting coming this Thursday, the eighteenth. So I'll report on that at our next meeting.
Thank you, sir, for those.
Oh, and just one last thing. We do have on the calendar to have a two-by-two meeting with the CSD. I believe next week. And so I'm just wanting to throw that out there. I think it was tentative. And so I just wanted to see if we could confirm that date and time.
And what is that again?
So community, consumers community, CSD. Two-by-two meeting.
And what, and what, explain two-by-two. I'm sorry.
So we get, it's kind of like cast, but, but for the CSD and the city.
Do we have appointees for that?
We do.
And they are?
Myself and Vice Mayor Sandu, I believe.
Okay. Okay. Do you need?
Question is for, the question's for Tina, just to confirm that that's still a go or if not to get it off, so we can take it off our calendars.
Yes, I will confirm.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hubert. Thank you, Councilmember Lozano. Myself, I have no, nothing to report. I haven't been to any commissions or committee. I do have an upcoming library authority meeting next week. But nothing to report other than that. So without anything further, we will go on to our next item, item F, which is our information consent calendar. It is recommended that we approve items one and two simultaneously, which are, item one is the minutes of the regular meeting from which are item one is the minutes of the regular meeting from February the second, two thousand and twenty one. Item two is receiving file warrants for a period ending February the second, two thousand and twenty one. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I will move consent calendar.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Papenow. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papenow.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Item passes five to zero. Moving on to our next item G, schedule matters, notice of public hearing. Do we have anything on this item tonight?
We do not.
Thank you. Next item, item H, our regular calendar. First up is going to be our city manager's office. Subject is the coronavirus COVID nineteen update. Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everyone see the the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. So our update this week, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one. In Sacramento County, as you can all see, that the number of cases has gone up by five percent. The number of deaths in Sac County have gone up by nine percent. And this is all measured from February second, our last council meeting. The name, the number of cases in Galt have gone up eighty eight cases and four percent. And the number of deaths have increased by nine percent. Believe it or not, the numbers are actually starting to taper off just a bit. So we're seeing some relief. But the urgency is still there and vigilance must be maintained. Sacramento County remains in the purple tier. We have eighteen point seven new COVID nineteen cases per one hundred thousand in population. With red tier must be less than seven daily cases per hundred thousand. So we've got a ways to go. We are down from twenty eight point seven cases per day on February second. So as I mentioned, the cases are the caseload is starting to tick downwards. We've got a six percent positivity rate. We have to be less than eight for the red tier. So we're we're where we need to be there. That six percent is down from eight point five percent two weeks ago. So we hope this trend continues. The greater Sacramento region ICU capacity is at twenty two point four percent. That is up from eighteen point four percent on February second. Vaccinate Sacramento webpage contains the most up to date vaccine information. So for all of the folks who are watching, please jot down this information. This information is also available on the city's website. And so you can get the link there. Beginning today, February second, February sixteenth, the county has opened COVID nineteen vaccination appointments for educators and childcare providers. So we now have a new group that's entering into the the ability to get vaccines. Registration instructions will be shared with school leaders so they can share with their employees in accordance with specific the specific rollout. Demand, however, continues to far exceed supply and appointments are still very limited. So we ask for your patience. For the folks who are sixty five and older can check the availability of appointments on the vaccinate Sacramento webpage. Also, check the city's social media where we, if there's an opportunity out there, we will make sure that we get that information out there. If there's also information out there that the city becomes aware of, we will make an effort to communicate with the sixty five and over population and with as much advanced notice as we can. New appointments continue to be added, so it's important to check the webpage daily, if not twice a day. Individuals in phase one B, tier one can be notified when an appointment becomes available by signing up at the vaccinate Sacramento webpage. So I can't understate how important it is that folks get out there and get themselves registered at this webpage. And that includes folks that are sixty five and older, healthcare workers, education and childcare workers, emergency service workers and food and ag workers. City staff will continue to push updates out through our social media, the city website and e-notification. So if you haven't signed up for an e-notification, please do. Residents are encouraged to sign up for the e-notification and all of the vaccine information from this presentation can be found under news, under the news tab on the city's website. This this flyer from Sacramento County is a real neat reference tool because it checks off all the groups that are currently available available to get vaccine appointments. The financial impacts of COVID. So we proactively establish a budget contingency for the financial impacts of COVID nineteen. And thus far, this fiscal year, the city has only used seventy two thousand in operating costs, even though we budgeted seven hundred and eighty seven thousand. The costs include cleaning and PPE of roughly nineteen thousand, telecommuting about forty nine thousand and emergency response, another four thousand. After year end, council will be informed of the full year's analysis of personnel costs, lost revenue and additional operating costs. So we'll be bringing all that to you. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report regarding COVID nineteen.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the information. And if anybody watching has any questions about any of this, they can always reach out to the city clerk's office for information and and if you follow the city on social media, Facebook or Instagram, we are very good. Our our city PIO officer is very good about posting information as as it comes readily to available to us. So please watch those and also our newsletter. We will try to update that anything new, so thank you. So there any comment from the council on this particular item before we move on to public comment on this item? Okay, do we have any written comment on this item, Tina?
No written public comment.
All right, do we have any raised hands raised online, Rose?
You have no raised hands online.
Okay. Without further ado, we will move on to our next item, which I believe is our Public Works Department. Is that, yeah, on the right page here. All right, item number two, subject the adoption of resolutions of intention to annex into community facilities district number twenty twenty slash one for Veranda at River Oaks, Cardosa one and Cedar Flats Estates. Mr. Selling.
Good evening, Mayor Farmer and councilmembers. Can somebody speak?
Yeah, hang on for a minute, Mike.
So I'll need probably council input and legal input. I need to notify everybody that my personal residence is within five hundred feet of the Veranda project. So I'll have to take myself out on that issue. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to hear the discussion overall and excuse myself for the vote on that resolution or if it would be more appropriate for me to excuse myself from the entire issue.
So so if I could, council has a choice. They could decide to move forward on on the entire matter at once, in which case Councilmember Papenow would disqualify himself and leave the room until the matter is concluded. Alternatively, you could hear a staff report on just the Veranda project, which is the only project that the council member has a conflict on, conclude that item through a vote and then move on to the next two, to the next two annexation issues. And and for those, Mr. Papenow could come back and participate. So the effect of that would be that you would need to have basically two staff, two similar staff reports.
Would would it be difficult to do that, Mike?
No.
I I think we should do that. I I think it's important that Kevin is is allowed to participate as much as possible being that he is here to represent, you know, the people of public that voted him in. So for that matter, I would be comfortable with him just excluding himself if he chooses to do so, just on the Veranda, but participating in the other two items.
That would be my preference, I appreciate it.
Is that fine with the rest of the council?
Yes.
Okay, then that's what we'll do.
Okay. So at this point, Mr. Papenow having declared that the conflict, he would need to leave the meeting. And then as soon as that part is done, maybe Lorenzo or I could get him, you know, could let him know and he could come back in.
Okay, got it.
I'll be leaving the meeting now.
Okay, so you can proceed with the specifics on the Veranda at River Oaks project, is that correct, Mr. Selling?
I think just Veranda, correct?
Yes, Veranda.
Okay. Okay, well, again, good evening, Mayor Farmer and councilmembers. This item is to consider the annexation of the Veranda Estates residential development into community facilities district twenty twenty dash one. And for reference, CFD twenty twenty dash one was approved by the city council in June of last year. The CFD is the funding mechanism for new developments whereby various city services, such as police and fire protection, flood protection and various ongoing maintenance activities related to streets, lighting, parks, landscaping and the like are paid for. The special taxes proposed to be levied will provide the revenue to offset the cost of providing the increased city services for Veranda Estates. And I want to be clear, this action only pertains to this new development. No existing development is included in this action. This is the first of a two step process. This first step is for the council to consider adopting a resolution of intention for Veranda Estates, which is tonight's action. The resolutions outline the key aspects of the process and the resolution outlines the key aspect of the process and includes setting a public hearing on April sixth. April sixth will be the second step. And in addition to the public hearing, will provide for an election of the respective property owners for these for this development to vote to enter the CFD. If the ballots affirm the annexation, the council will approve the election results and authorize the levying of the special taxes on the on this new development only. This concludes my remarks for the Veranda Estates. Ms. Steiner or Mr. Forrest may have some additional comments and we are all available to answer any questions. Thank you.
So, Mr. Selling, I think that there was a correction on the resolution for the dates. Do you want to give them the dates?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Steiner. The resolution states that the hearing would be on March second and that is incorrect. We would have the city clerk corrected to reflect the April sixth date.
Thank you for that. Do we have any council comments first on this first item?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple comments. Mr. Selling, I believe there's on June sixteen, twenty twenty, we adopt the new CFD, right, twenty twenty one, right?
In twenty twenty, correct, yes.
And this CFD can be all any new development coming to this town.
Correct.
And it also apply if there is annexation, right?
So it would basically, it would be a separate action from an annexation. Are you talking an annexation into the city?
No, I'm like any annexation to the city in the future. There's the CFD or we can be user, that can be a separate action.
It would be a separate action.
Okay, and the other thing is is the previously CFD twenty twenty one, did we use on, I think Summerfield and Simmerhorn project?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Then the other my question is, you know, there is a three context, right? Special text A, special text B and special text C, right? And these texts is is special like in services. I believe E text is municipal. It is, I think, special text B is a fire. And the special text C is the maintenance.
Correct.
And then we also, you know, there is a table on there, they said residential, I believe, five seventy two and four one six is non residential. No, I believe multiple units. Can you a little bit explain multiple unit is like in duplex, triplex, fourplex or or department complex?
Correct, a multi multi unit would be, yeah, like you just said, an apartment duplex, triplex, anything that has multiple dwelling units in one structure.
Okay, on the multiple, you know, developed unit, if you look at a duplex, they have a separate parcel number. But if you're gonna look up as the apartment complex, they can, we have one parcel. So that can be on a parcel number, not a unit. Because the on the apartment complex, they don't usually have the separate parcel number. Is that true?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, and the other thing is, you know, there is there the the one more thing, you know, these texts, they're going to increase by the CPI, right?
Correct.
On the CPI, why are we using San Francisco, Oakland and Hayward? We do.
Yeah, so my understanding is the Bureau of Labor Statistics has essentially divided the state. I believe it's into three areas, if you will, one essentially being the San Francisco, Oakland Hayward, which is pretty much northern California. And then there's one for the Los Angeles area, and I think there's a third one for San Diego. And why they've done that, I'm not sure. My understanding is that I think some years ago, there used to be additional regional areas like Sacramento, San Joaquin Valley. However, you know, maybe for efficiency sake or not, you know, seeing the benefit of the additional workload into generating all those additional CPIs. Because there are several categories too in each region. And so, again, this is speculation on my part. You know, if they were just looking to consolidate and reduce their workload or whatnot, I'm unsure. But I know that that's the CPI that we go by here essentially. And it is tied to the Bay Area, so.
You know, but there is a CPA on Bay Area thirty three percent more than average. So I know I knew we are doing this one for a while, but there is any way in the future. Because I'm talking about this area and Bay Area is CPA is difference.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Mr. Medvee might be on still. He was earlier, but anyway, we can check and get back to you.
I'm here.
Oh, there he is down there, I didn't see him, Mike, yeah. Mike, can you shed any light on that or am I accurate on that or?
You were accurate, there are three CPI measurements and we'll always pick the one that's geographically closest to the area in question. You know, in the in the long run, the the CPI factors, you know, they 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 don't include things like real estate prices or anything like that. And they don't include energy prices, but they're they're pretty. You know, when you when you look at it over the long term, it's it's a pretty, you know, it it feels very average as an increase over time. I wouldn't I wouldn't be concerned that you are going by, you know, rapidly increasing expenses that that we kind of associate with the Bay Area in Sacramento area. It has more to do with consumer goods and the like. And it's a pretty good estimate of how much you would be paying in this case in terms of salary increases for city personnel or, you know, other other items like that, materials to do replacements or construction work or maintenance work. It tracks pretty closely, I think, to what you would expect. There's never, there's never a perfect escalator, but this is one that matches almost all of our precedents and this is typically how we select them.
So the Michael, that's that's very appropriate practice your company doing to compare all other project in this area to the Bay Area, but there is a difference. And you said there is. But there is a difference, and you said there is, there is a salary difference. And there's your product, there are consumers, CPA means, you, you know what CPA means?
Yeah, consumer price.
Yes, that, that, there's a difference, and I'm talking, oh, you might be doing some other project in other city. That's a very basic practice comparing the Bay Area with the North Sacramento.
Well, we're not comparing the Bay Area economy with Sacramento. We're just using that regional consumer price index to increase the rate of the of the special tax. So it doesn't include things like, you know, the, the real estate values or anything along those lines, you know, that's not factored in. We, we have, we have the choice of using different indices. But this is the standard practice for these types of CFDs, and, you know, whether we're doing one in, you know, Roseville, or trying to think of some other Sacramento area. I mean, even, even as far north as the, the Redding area, we, we still use the San Francisco CPI. You know, city of Shasta Lake. Trying to think of some others. Yeah, it's, it's pretty standard practice, just pick the, the area that's closest by and use that CPI, and it works out well.
All right, that's just my concern. All right, there. Thank you, Michael. Thank you for the explanation.
Sure thing.
All right, Mr. Mayor, so far, I'm gonna move, move to the next council member. I might come back later.
All right, Councilmember Vanderburg.
I have no questions at the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Lozano.
No questions. Thank you for bifurcating this report, Mr. Selling. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano. I don't have any questions per se, just to remind the public that this was gonna be on the consent calendar, if I'm not mistaken, but city manager felt it important for just education with public and transparency to pull it out, so there could be some discussion on. This is an item that has already been set into motion. We were just basically going through the motions here to adopt this to each of the additional new subdivisions that come online under the CFD that we approved earlier in, in past months. So I don't have any specific questions. So I will entertain a motion to, so I need a motion, Harriet Corcoran, just to approve the resolution pertaining to Veranda at River Oaks specifically, correct?
So the, yes, with the corrected dates. Have you called for a public comment on this, though?
No, thank you. I will do that. But just when I get ready to do the motion, it will be, the dates aren't in the adopted resolution, though, so the dates don't pertain to my.
I'm sorry, I thought the date was in the resolution.
No.
Yeah, to be, I think it was item number ten.
No, it's not in the, it's not on the agenda for my statement of adopt a resolution, etc., it doesn't have any dates.
While you're doing the public comment, let me pull up the agenda again.
Sure. Section ten, hearing on annexation of territory. It sets the public hearing date as March second, but that's been changed.
Right, and we just need to change that one, right? So number ten, I mean, the resolution is all the same except where it says March tenth, it's gonna go to April sixth, since.
I'm not seeing that in my resolution, though, is what I'm stating. Under the recommended action, I see there's no dates there. It doesn't even mention, it doesn't even mention a public hearing. I'm just, the part that I read for recommended action does not have that. So if there's something different than what I have, someone else will need to read the recommended action when it comes time for that.
I think the recommended action's the same. It's just that we need to put in there that the attached resolution, which annexes the, that territory for Veranda at River Oaks, under section ten, from, we need to change it from March second to April sixth.
Exactly correct.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but I read verbatim on the recommended action from the, I don't, I'm not looking at the staff report, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the.
What, what I'm, what I'm saying is because the resolution that's in your packet has the wrong hearing date. Needs to have a, needs to note, the motion that approves the resolution needs to note the change in the hearing date.
Okay, noticing the public hearing date change of, and the date is what?
April sixth.
April sixth, okay. Okay, well, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution declaring intention to annex territory to the city of Galt, Community Facility District number twenty twenty dash one, Public Services, and adopting a map of the area proposed to be annexed thereto, annexation of Veranda at River Oaks, with the notice that the public hearing has now been changed to April the sixth. Does that work?
Yes.
That's right, motion.
I, so move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Vanderburg, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Vanderburg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. We now want to, someone, Mr. Hines, if you wanted to ask Mr. Councilmember Papinow to rejoin us. As soon as he rejoins, we can proceed, Mr. Selling. You're gonna do the next two together, correct, Mike?
Correct.
Just sent him a text. If you just give him a couple minutes and.
No problem. All right, there we go.
Okay, well, good evening again, Mayor and full council. This item is to consider annexing two new residential developments, Cardoso One and Cedar Flats Estates into Community Facilities District number twenty twenty dash one. For reference, CFD twenty twenty dash one was approved by the city council in June of last year. The CFD is the funding mechanism for new developments whereby various city services such as police and fire protection, flood protection, and various ongoing maintenance activities related to streets, lighting, parks, landscaping are paid for. The special taxes proposed to be levied will provide the revenue to offset the cost of providing the increased city services for these two new respective developments. And I want to be clear here, this action only pertains to these two new developments. No existing development is included in this action. This is the first of a two-step process. And this first step is essentially for the council to consider adopting separate resolutions of intention for each of these two developments, and that's tonight's action. The resolutions outline the key aspects of the process and include setting a public hearing date of April sixth. April sixth will be the second step in the process. And in addition to the public hearing, will provide for an election of the respective property owners for these two developments to vote to enter the CFD. If the ballots affirm the annexation, the council will approve the election results and authorize the levying of the special taxes on these two new developments only. This concludes my remarks. Ms. Steiner or Mr. Forrest may also have additional comments, and we are all available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Selling. Any council comments? Vice Mayor Sandu, do you have anything?
Mr. Sallik, just only quick information. You know, these two project, if we comparing on the special tax C have a different figure, so this calculation, can you might be explain to me how come up with the different figure? I think special taxi is maintenance.
So the special taxi will vary depending on the services for the different developments. And I'd probably refer to Mr. Forrest or Mr. Medvee if they could provide some additional detail in this particular case.
Thank you, Mr. Selling. This is Bill Forrest. Special taxi is comprised of a number of items. Centerline miles of public streets, public landscaping, number of streetlights. And so the cost to maintain those annually is applied to the respective numbers for each individual subdivision, and then it's divided by the number of lots in that subdivision to get. So that's why you're seeing a different number between the two subdivisions is that, for example, the number of streetlights varies from one subdivision to the other.
All right, thank you, Bill. That's why I see on a different, you know, different figure, and thank you for the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Councilmember Vanderburg, I'm sorry, Councilmember Papinow.
One question to clarify on the public hearing date. Trying to look, I thought I read that it was March second, and I think you said April sixth. Am I confused there?
Yes, no, yeah, you missed that in the first section, Councilmember. We did catch that error on the resolution. It should say April sixth. And so we'll be correcting that.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Yeah, Mike, per conversation earlier today, could you touch on a couple of things I, I spoke to you about, you know, there, there's a page two, there's a bullet point, it says other improvements as authorized by the act, which seems rather open-ended, so since this is, you know, could you explain that a little bit, and then there's also how the tax could be calculated year to year. It says two percent or my notes are a little mixed up because of the way I read it through it a couple of times, but or something else, whichever is higher, and it could be as high as ten percent. So could you touch on those two points and, you know, maybe explain to the public and myself again, why it wouldn't be an excessive amount?
Yes, so on the other items that may be covered under the Melrose Act, there can be something unique to a given development, maybe some public art feature or something along those lines. You know, that would be covered under the act in addition to, you know, what we've listed here as far as police, fire, you know, road, streetlight and such maintenance, so, so they could, when it says other things, it's specific to each development, so we don't have that in these cases. But there could be other things like that, so. And then, as far as the, as far as the adjustment, yeah, the two percent is essentially the floor. And so if the CPI comes back and it's less than two percent, then the, the adjustment would be two percent. And that has happened, I mean, in times of, you know, economic downturn, I think Bill and I were talking earlier. And it's been, you know, almost zero at, on occasion, or even, you know, in the one to one and a half percent range. And so in those cases, if that's what the CPI came back as, then we would, the adjustment would be a flat two percent. So, and then it goes, it can go up from there, so CPI two percent is really the floor. But it can go up, as you, as you noted, to the, the max of ten percent is my understanding, too. Typically, the CPI is in the three to four percent range, though.
And then one last final question, you know, there's been talk of a citywide facilities district, but what we're discussing here and what we're annexing or voting to annex will be separate from anything that may go to a ballot.
Yes, so yeah, just to be clear, as I, as I noted in the remarks, this does not affect any existing development. This is only for these specific new developments. The, you know, you mentioned a citywide CFD. That was one option that was discussed, you know, several months ago, I want to say, when the former interim city manager was, you know, discussing with the council options, looking into options for revenue generation, and other options include things like sales tax measure or a property tax. Those are, this was, this citywide CFD for what would be the existing older part of the city essentially was, was just one other option that was discussed at that, but there were no decisions made. And yes, just to be clear, this is completely separate. This is only for new development.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Lozano.
Just one clarification, Mr. Selling, so this is essentially the, a, a tax on a property that has, is gonna have future impact on city services that are currently in place and will only affect the current property owners of the, of that, of those parcels and won't affect any additional public.
So it would, basically, the existing property owners would be the ones who would cast their ballots to annex into the district. However, you know, as these are residential developments, there are gonna be many lots on these, you know, existing parcels. And so these taxes would be levied against whoever ends up purchasing those lots.
Got it. Probably also through sales ta, or I'm sorry, the sale price of the home, I'm sure.
Correct.
Reflect that, okay, perfect. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozano. I just have a couple of questions. Just to kind of piggyback on what my colleague just said, that this is, this is basically for those watching on property that nobody lives at, yeah, these are developments that are near completion or under construction. These are not existing people that are already living. None of these have ownership yet, as far as we know. Or do we know that? Yeah, Mike?
Well, the property is owned by the developers, yes.
Right.
Yeah, but yeah, no one else yet, and that's why we need to, you know, the timeliness of, of conducting this effort before they do start selling the lots, so.
Right. Do you, I know it's none of our, it's not, it's not required by us, but I'm just curious, I mean, I would assume it's common practice for the home developer, when they sell homes, that they're, the home buyers notified of such things? I mean, I know, like, when you buy order, okay.
Yeah, that stack of documents that probably anybody who's bought a house, and they go through all of these things that you have to sign an initial, it's in there.
Hopefully they read it. So I, I was curious what you said about the, when Councilmember Vanderburg brought up the, the, the point about the previous discussions regarding the city wide CFD. If, so this is, this, this wasn't like an alternative idea that came up in contrast to that, there, there still is, there still could be a possible discussion at some point in the future to do that regarding the existing areas. This is just, we're just taking care of the new areas, right?
Correct, yes. This CFD is only for new development. If, you know, if in future discussions, if that were to be pursued, that would be something completely separate.
Okay, I just misunderstood it, like, it almost sounded like you said, well, we were talking about maybe, maybe doing a citywide CFD, but it, but we decided to just instead, just, you know, form a new CFD for the new developments, and I was thinking that was something that was like either and, but it wasn't, okay. Well, I don't have any further questions, so if no other council has any questions on this matter, then I will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution declaring, I'm sorry, we have to go to public comment first. Do you have any public comment, uh, Tina, on this item?
No written comment.
And do we have any hands raised on lies, Rose?
We do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. Alright, now I will entertain a motion to adopt resolutions declaring intention to annex territory to the City of Galt Community Facilities District Number 2020 dash 1 Public Services and adopting a map of the area proposed to be annexed there to annexation, annexation of number 2 Cordosa 1 and annexation number 3 Cedar Flats Estates, uh, noting that the public hearing date is corrected to be April 6th. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Moved by Councilmember Vanderburg. I will second, seconded by Mayor Farmer, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye, motion passes five to zero. Moving on to our next item, three, subject wastewater rate and capacity fee information, Mr. Selling.
Yes, good evening again, Mayor Farmer and councilmembers. A few months ago, uh, there were some inquiries regarding the city sanitary sewer rates. And at the city manager's request, Public Works will provide a brief presentation to cover the recent history on the city sewer rates, details on how the rates are determined, and some context as to where the city's rates are in comparison to other municipalities in the region. Mr. Mark Clarkson, our city engineer, will make the presentation, and then we will be available afterwards to answer any questions. So with that, I'd like to invite Mr. Clarkson to give the presentation.
If you go ahead and mute your, unmute your mic. Mark, are you on there? You'll need to unmute your mic, your microphone. The lower left-hand corner. Let me just take a look here, make sure. Mark, I have you on there, so if I can just have you unmute your microphone. Let me. There we go, he's on, go ahead. Mark, you're on, go ahead, I could see your microphones, I muted.
Is your sound up, Mark? Your microphone turned up?
Let's see. So he muted himself again. Mike, Sally, do you want to give him a, a call, see if everything's okay with him?
Yeah.
Anybody, folks. Difficulties here. I've acknowledged Mark's Clarkson's vote to go back to live meetings.
Rose, I just asked Mark if he would like to unmute. So let's, let's see how he responds.
Okay, I also have Sally giving him a phone call just to make sure that he's
Okay.
Not having any, any other difficulties.
Understood, understood. I'll start the PowerPoint when, uh, Mark starts. Hopefully everyone was able to see it while it was briefly up there, so.
Rose, he's going to call in on the phone and do the audio that way?
Okay, I will look for his number.
Thank you.
Alright, I got him on the phone, so. Mark, I have you on the line, go ahead and I have you muted, so. Let's try something. Mark, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
We could hear you, let's go for it.
Okay, so whoever's taking care of the PowerPoint. Um, second page, where it says 217 wastewater, uh, rate overview. It's just a quick synopsis, what, what we had here is we had several questions about how the wastewater rate was developed, um, when it occurred, and also our capacity charges that we have for water, wastewater and stormwater. So, doing the wastewater rate first, the wastewater rates are, are, uh, given to residents and to the commercial, non-residents. Um, on a, on a bi-monthly basis, that's what they pay for their sewer fees in regards to, uh, a collection and the treatment plant, uh, system itself. So with that, the, um, on page two, under the wastewater rate, this story began way back, you know, over 10 years ago. The, our discharge permit that we had at that time was issued by the state, required us to do some extensive uh, rehab and additional stuff to our treatment plant to be able to meet discharge requirements for the basin plan that they adopted years ago. And it just finally hit us in our 2010 permit, and we had a period of a few years to do all this. So over the next several years, we did environmental, we did master planning, we reviewed, uh, different alternatives. Uh, we, we were, it was really a, an extensive, uh, uh, working with the councils, with the city council at that time, with staff, with consultants, it was just a variety of, of people involved in this and putting a lot of time and quickly doing this because we had to have it done by 216, uh, 2016. And it, it was a really long project. Well, during that time, besides all the regulatory, we, we, we were able to get um, an SRF loan, we found out how we were going to pay for, for this facility, all regulatory driven. And, uh, and our initial estimates were around $30 million, and we ended up at about $24 million when the project was completed. So, after, or when the project was winding down, we had our costs done, we started doing a cost of service study. Cost of service study, we'll talk about what's involved in that, uh, in, in a few, uh, spots here. But in 2017, 217, we held a series of workshops, uh, with council, with the public, all advertised, everybody invited to be a part of that. Um, and these series of workshops, uh, during that time, city council gave direction to staff on how they wanted the rates to be, uh, to look like, how they wanted the different, uh, classifications to be done. Um, all the way through even, even through the, um, how much reserves, uh, we wanted to have on hand. Now, regulatory requirements, Prop 218, um, judicial, uh, determinations, all these different things come into play when we were doing the rates. So we're still locked in, we're not only we're not only controlled by the regulators on what we discharge, but how we can pay for that discharge, those improvements and stuff. So, so this whole process, we were, you know, we had to have the nexus, we had to follow our legal requirements. And, um, and in November 217, all of this culminated with the city council uh, having a Prop 218, um, hearings and adopting the rates, both the wastewater rate and also the capacity charges, which we'll talk about capacity in a few minutes. The next page talks about the sewer rate, uh, driving factors. Um, as I talked about, we, we had to find how we were going to pay for this big cost for our little ti- tiny town, 25,000. We were going to have a 30-plus million dollar bill, and how were we going to pay for that? And we're going out, looking at general, we looked at several different things, we had different consultants looking around, and we ended up with a state revolving fund, uh, loan, that was just a little bit under 2% was the, uh, rate at a 20-year period. We also met with the council and they adopted a, a resolution, you know, indicating what our reserves, what our reserves should be, um, what they would look like. A couple of our reserves are mandated by the state, and those are for our debt service. And there's some other reserves in, in there that, that the council adopted at that time. Um, we did cost of service adjustments in the rate design, we went back and forth with the council, like I said, at these different workshops, and we adjusted the things as the council, as, as best we could within the guidelines that we were required to do. And, and under the direction of the council. Another thing that we have, you know, we look at, you know, we were really intense on looking the operation and maintenance of, of the system. So this took, this, this, to do a cost of service study, to do all of these rates, it was many hours in front of the council to, uh, to get them up to speed on what the cost of service studies were, our findings, and, and it took a lot of time. So I'm, I'm given, I, I think, I think Mr. Heinz said I could have two hours to do this presentation? Well, maybe not two hours, but I'm trying to really condense it. And this, this next one, the adoption of the financial plan is, is, was the guiding with the steering wheel of where the coun, where the council at the time wanted us to be in a 10-year period. And the first five years of rate adjustments that, that they adopted, we were going to be eating up our reserves. And that's just how they looked at it, they thought that we would have an increase, you know, we, well, everybody thought that we might have an increase in in, uh, in commercial and, and residential, new customers coming in, a, a wider base. Different things would happen to, to allow this to be spread out over more people, and to be able to get our reserves back. Well, we quite aren't there, and, uh, right now, we're in year four of the rates. And, um, and so we're still eating our reserves at this time. And we are hoping that as we go through another cost of service study that we'll be brief, bringing before the council in about a year on the wastewater, we'll discuss, you know, what the, what the revenue needs are, what the costs are, all the associated, um, uh, uh, revenue needs and, and where the reserves are at that time. So on the next page, uh, with those adopted, it's just, it's just a different chart that kind of shows, you know, what's happening with our reserves over time, as you can just see that they're just decreasing. There's a few other reserves, and those are in the, in the, um, in the kind of the purple, light purple range, those are, those are required, those two reserves are required by the, by the state. The operating reserve is what you have to have to be able to pay off your bills over a three, four-month period as you're collecting, you know, we, we collect, we, we get our revenue stream primarily from the customer, uh, payments every two months. So we keep about four months, uh, uh, active on those reserves. We have some capital reserves which are done, uh, just for capital, for capital improvements that we have to continue to do at the wastewater plant and collection system. And then we have, uh, emergency reserves that's there. All of those reserves, again, were adopted by the council in early 2017, I, I believe it was April 2017. Um, what I'm showing you here, as I'm showing you the graphs, it's also what the council saw at that time, and we had our cost of service study probably had, uh, well over, uh, 75 graphs and charts and everything as, as we walked through many of these. But I'm just showing you this one this time. The rate design, there's different ways you can do a rate design, but they all kind of in, incorporate the same requirements, the revenue, the fixed and variable components, the different types of classes that get, that the council wanted to see, and a flow components. Again, it all had to be defensible on what we were doing. Um, I know people have talked about having a, a, a senior rate, but you can't really do that, that, that's not allowed, um, to do that, but we can have a low-flow rate, we can have other things. But at that time, the city council didn't, uh, chose not to do that. They grouped basically all of the residential together as, as one, and then the, we're split out in, in different categories. Um, the rates that were developed, as you see on the, on the monthly fixed charges and the variable rates, lot of numbers there, but if you look at the left column numbers, that's where we were at the time that the council was considering this. I think one of the things that the council, um, as we went through this, it was a lot of, a lot of discussion about this over, over a period of several years. Every time that I brought a contract related to the wastewater, uh, plant, its facilities, environmental documents, whatever we, I brought forward, I also let the council know that all of those actions they were taking was going to bump this rate at least $20 a month uh, for our customers. And that was the first time I said that to the council was in January 213. And they heard that for the next four or five years, you know, four years before the rates, before our cost of service study was done, because as you do behind, you know, on the napkin, well, it's really more than that, but spreadsheets and stuff, knew the impact was going to be really great, and the council, the council was surprised of that. At every chance I got, when I was in front of the council regarding wastewater issues, enterprise funds, adopting the budget, um, you know, on the annually, it was, it was a continual effort to, to let the public know that this was coming, and it was, it was completely required by the state. If the state didn't do its, you know, its requirements that they did in 210, we wouldn't have had, we wouldn't have had this type of debt or these type of increases. Anyway, so as you look at, we were at about 48 bucks at that time per month. And our first, uh, adopted rate, uh, was just a little over 63 bucks. And right now, we've, um, we're in, uh, year four at $74, and, uh, that's to go into effect on March 1st. And, uh, and we'll continue on, and, and so the council had adopted five, a period of five years, five rate increases across the whole board from single-family residential, multi and non-residential. And each of those, as it points out in the, in the one, you know, in the white thing there is the SRF number two, that, that that increase, um, was primarily, the first increase was just to cover the debt service for the SRF state revolving fund loan number two, which is about $1.6 million a year that we have to pay on that, on that debt. Um, the variable rates have to do with commercials and the, the commercial accounts and, and such. The next, the next page that we have there is, is the council wanted to see where we, where we compared with the cities around us. And at that time, uh, we were proposing in the $63 range, and this was 2017, this is what the council saw before they adopted, you know, when we got to the final uh, workshops and, and then into the 218 hearing. So we saw that Lodi was a little lower than us, most of the other cities were, were pretty close to where we were. And, and we're, we're small in comparison to Lodi, Outgrove, Outgrove and Sac County and Sac City, they all, and, and Folsom, they all dump into that big regional plant that's, um, that's off the Sacramento River, and, and they get, they'll have generally lower rates because of just the size that they are. And, uh, and how they can put it across more constituents. And, and we're, 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 we're kind of, um, we're kind of hampered because we only have about 7,000, about 7,500 or so right now of customers. And, and so it hurts us when we have this, this type of increase. Again, the state passes the regulations, we have to follow. So, but I do want to point out a couple of things, uh, City of Lodi is, is real close to 60 bucks right now, which surprised me that they had went up that high in the last, uh, three years. And then, uh, uh, City of Sacramento has, um, And then, uh, uh, city of Sacramento has, um, also hit the seventy-dollar mark, uh, right now. And so, um, and their, as their increases happen because they're doing new improvements to, it's about two billion dollars. Yeah, B was a billion improvements to that regional plant that everybody's dumping in and everybody's going to have to pay for that. And they're constructing that right now. So you're going to see their rates continue. On the next page, for the non-residential, uh, rate examples, we had, the council saw this. And as you can see from the low strength, high strength, you know, that we did, we did several different types of commercial entities. And when you look at the percent change for the first year, it, it was pretty, pretty large. Um, you know, anywhere from sixty percent to over, over a hundred percent increase. And, and that was purported all along, at least through the four-month period that, that we were holding our workshops at that time. Um, what we had determined was that however the rates were adopted previously, we don't know how they were adopted. We tried to find the paperwork on it. We couldn't, we couldn't find anything, cost of service studies that had been done. And so we couldn't, we didn't know how it happened, but we could tell when we did our cost of service study that it was, there was an imbalance where the residential homeowners were paying a little more than their share of the total cost. And we can't balance it like that. We have to do just what their impacts are, what the commercial impacts are and what the residential impacts are. And that's what our numbers came about. Um, surprisingly, like I indicated, there, there was, with all of the information we had at the council, I had been in front of the chamber several times talking about these improvements. Um, you know, different, different entities that the city manager and others had been involved in. Um, we had, we, we didn't have the turnout that you would think of having rates this high, but I think everybody understood it over the years, because this was an ongoing process, knowing that the hit was coming. And, uh, and, and people were, were pretty much, you know, there was a lot of customer outreach to get them, uh, to get them current on what was, what the city was going to. The next separation from the wastewater rates are the capacity fees. And when you go to the second page of the developer impact piece, what, what really are, what, what are they? You know, they're, this is all development as, um, as one of the comments were said earlier about the CFP, nobody's living there yet. But these are the fees, these are the fees that developers have to pay in order to buy into our system, uh, that we have, uh, for them. Um, it's a one-time charge. It's, it's only on the new development. Any, you know, you can have a, a new building on an old lot, but it's still new development. And then, uh, and then it's usually collected at the time of the building permit done. And it has to be, it has to be a share that is proportional, it's defensible, and it's only the impact that that development is putting on our system, whether it's water, wastewater or storm drains. On the next page, you know, what are our justifications? We have to reflect, reflect any type of the link with the fees and the benefits that each of the customers get, each of the developer gets. And we can't exceed any costs that are not part of what they impacted us. And again, on the, on what is our, what is our beacon? Our beacon is growth pays for growth, but we still are required by law to have a nexus and it has to be defensible. When I indicate defensive, defensibility, that means, that means defensible in court, uh, to be able to support our, our, um, our fees. The adopted fees that we had, we had, again, I have three lines there on the next page. We had the current, uh, water fee, wastewater fee, storm drainage, and then the proposed and what that difference was. And the water doubled, almost doubled. The wastewater decreased. And we'll talk about each one of them as I go through them. And then the storm water doubled. Um, some of the reason, the next page, it, it talks about what are the water, you know, the water capacity fee comparison. Um, it's really hard to compare our system with another system. We have deep wells. We, we, um, we're a groundwater system. We had to, for a long time and still some of our wells treat for arsenic. And we treat for iron and we treat for manganese where other people can, you know, have different treatment requirements and have different, different, uh, things that they have to do, whether it's surface water or groundwater. And so it's really hard to determine, or it's really hard to connect apples to apples on the water. But, but with the water, we, um, we were not collecting the fees that we needed to do. These are the fees that we came up with, with our master plans and the things that are needed for our developers to come on and tie into our system and only have to pay their fees on a house-by-house basis as they pull their, their permits. Um, so a- again, I want to give you an update. Uh, Lodi is knocking on sixty-five hundred dollars right now. And Algroa Water District, these are just a couple I looked at, uh, this last week. Algroa Water District, District, depending on where you're living in the district, it's anywhere, or where you're going to be living, where they're going to be building, it's anywhere from forty-five hundred to eighty-five hundred, uh, for a capacity fee. So that's a comparison there. On the wastewater, you saw that it went down about ten percent. Again, we can only do what's proportional, what the nexus is and what, what, what we feel is defensible. And it had, and it decreased the rate. That's just what, how the numbers came out. It's just where they were. And, um, and so it was about a ten percent in, uh, decrease. Um, again, uh, you know, most of them are kind of ahead of us, you know, way on, you know, way out on their capacity fees. Ours are, are, are pretty good in the area. And right now Lodi is, is punching at eighty-eight hundred, um, connection fee right now. Sewer. So it's, they were a little bit behind us, but most of them are now ahead of us or higher than us on our capacity fees. Stormwater, that's just too hard to, that's really apples to apples. It's really maybe apples to pickles. It's so different. When you look at Folsom, their storm drainage goes into it, they're, they're really steep on where their areas are. That, that flows really quickly into the American River and some other drainage courses that they have. Uh, whereas Lodi sits down in a bowl and they have to do a lot of, a lot more holding, a lot, a lot of pumping, a lot of other things. So it's really, it, it just depends on where you're at. And we kind of sit on it a little, a little bit. And so, so our fees are relatively lower than some of them, uh, just because of, of the area that we sit in and, and how we, we sit, uh, geographically. So when you look at all this, and I got the last sheet is for questions, is that it was a long process, a lot of customer input, a lot of council input, um, regulatory requirements from one end to the other. And, uh, and we came out in two seventeen to adopt the rates and, uh, and, you know, as of the requirements that we had from that two thousand and ten permits. So I'm here for questions. I'm invisible, but I am here.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, I have a quick question. Um, I don't know which page of the slide. It's the non-residential rate examples. And was that, so those are, those are one-time impact or is that some monthly? They listed like, it talked about large industrial grocery pools, so on and so forth.
Yeah, those are the monthly rates.
Wow.
At that time, that was just, that was at two seventeen when they were adopted in, uh, November two thousand and seventeen. That's what their monthly rate would have been. We, and we took like, you know, we didn't put their names down here, but we took a local hotel and we used a year of their data for averages. We took a local restaurant. Um, because there's two McDonald's, I can say McDonald's, so we don't know which one we looked at. Well, we know which one we looked at, but it was like that. We took actual costs that, that, that the different people had that were in the city and we ran what their, what their numbers could be on a monthly basis. So that, that was the, the two thousand and seventeen monthly charge at that time. That's what they would have increased on their costs. And it did happen because they.
Yeah, it was, because it was twenty seventeen. Okay. All right. And the other, the other chart you showed was just, that was the building, that was the, that was the connection fee, the, the six thousand and the, you know, we're talking about the other cities that were really high. That's a connection for like, if you build a home or a building or something, those are one-time fees. Correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, yeah, it's very informative. We appreciate you're going through it again. I mean, I remember, I remember watching this in two thousand and seventeen. You're right. There was a lot of discussion. I remember there was, there was a, there was obviously a lot of people upset about it, but it was a Prop two eighteen issue and there was a public hearing. And so there was an ample opportunity. Obviously protested at that time and it wasn't, uh, there was clearly wasn't enough to, um, stop what we did. But, um, we got to do, we got to do apparently. So, um, does any council have any comments on this, uh, presentation?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, just for, uh, maybe one question. Mr. Clarkson, uh, you know, there's this, uh, the back in twenty seventeen, the council approved that, right? Five-year increase rate, residential and commercial, right?
Yes, the council adopted it in November two thousand and seventeen.
Okay. And now there is one thing, uh, utility fund cash reserve policy, that policy they adopted in twenty seventeen, that they, they don't have no policy before that?
No, there, there was, they had adopted rate, I mean, there was rates that were adopted something like ten years before that, ten or fifteen, ten years or so before that. And so they had, um, they had adopted rates back at that period of time, I think. I think it was around two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine, they, they had adopted rates at that time because we had another, uh, we had a, uh, a plant improvements that were required by the state at that time. And that was for an SRF of about sixteen million dollars. But, uh, um, this was, this was brand-new money that we had to throw at the plant, uh, brand-new discharge requirements. So that, that was a major driving factor. But they didn't have, uh, as far as policies, they didn't have a, a policy on, uh, what the reserves should be for the wastewater enterprise fund. There were several things that, that we had to get the council to approve prior to finishing our cost of service study.
All right. And then the other thing on reserve policy, and you mentioned something, some reserve policy mandate by the state and some reserve policy adopted by city council. Could you might be a little bit explain what the city, uh, city council adopted that policy? Can you a little bit explain on that?
Yeah, I believe that the, that the reserves, the reserve resolution was adopted in April two thousand and seventeen. And it discussed the different levels from, from having cash on hand to having, um, uh, emergency reserves and different things like that. As far as what's mandated by the state, when you look at the purple, when you look at the two thousand and seventeen wastewater utility reserves, you'll see a couple of, it's kind of a darker purple and a lighter purple. Um, those two are required by the state. The state requires, because we, we took out, uh, debt service in, on two different loans, the state requires a complete one-year payment of that loan, um, to be held in reserve just in case something happens with our, with our finances. So we have a one-year reserve set for the first SRF that was done back in two thousand and nine or so. And then we had the, the second SRF that was done in, in two thousand and fourteen. Um, that has a one-year component in reserves there. And, uh, and that's required by, by the state. The other reserves are just to pay our expenses. When you look at the, uh, the blue, that's, that's basically to pay our expenses as we get them from our light bill to our employee expenses. And, uh, and because we get, we get our, uh, we get the citizens, you know, our customers pay us, you know, we have billings every two months, we have to keep a period of four months, four to five months of cash on hand because it's up and down in our cash flow, uh, during that time. And, uh, and as, when you look at the capital, it's just what's, what we intended, what our reserves, we looked at and what we were going to need over the next ten years from our capital improvement program. And then the emergency reserve was just, uh, uh, trying to keep a little over a, a million dollars there for emergencies. And, uh, so the council adopted those levels at that time. We're not at those levels. The emergency reserve, I mean, the, uh, the capital is a lot smaller because that's where we're eating into it. Um, but the other reserves, especially the ones mandated by the state, we are, we are maintaining those reserves.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson, for the explanation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other council members have a comment on this? Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Clarkson, on slide seventeen, we have monthly fixed charges and variable rates. And that's, um, probably, I don't know what the first C is, but cubic feet, dollars per cubic feet. Could you go over that again? Here's my confusion. It appears that single-family residential and multifamily residential are paying a lot of money, um, every, every month. And it's significantly lower for non-residential, but that's, that doesn't strike. It seems like probably going to be closer, um, one to the other, uh, than, than what it appears. So could you go through that slide once again?
Sure. Let me, uh, explain the difference between residential and non-residential. Now, the residential is basically your commercial and industrial. Your residential is, you know, apartments and single-family residence. And, and the difference, the primary difference between them is the residential is a flat rate, straight across the line. It doesn't matter if they have seven people in the house. It doesn't matter. They have, have, uh, you know, two people in the house. It's a flat rate, straight across. Um, that is the same rate they're, they're going to pay. That's going to be double because it, we get a, a two-month bill. Um, that is their rate. When you get a non-residential, there is a flat rate there, which is, you know, when you look at it, it's starting out at, at just under ten dollars. That flat rate is just really an administrative rate. Their rates are all calculated in below where it comes to the variable rates. And so for every seat, uh, cubic foot that they use for ever seven hundred and, and forty-six gallons of water that they utilize, they get charged, we'll just take the first one for the low rate. They get five, additional five dollars and fifty-seven cents charged on their sewer for that. So as, as the water goes in their meter, like into their restaurant, um, into a restaurant, for every, every CCF that goes in there, they get charged five fifty-seven for that. And, and so if they're using a hundred CCF, if you go to the, uh, the page that I had, um, a couple of pages from that, when I showed differences in, in, uh, non-residential rates, you're going to see that, that if you take a, um, you go down, uh, a partway downward says fast food number one, their, um, their rate actually went up to seven hundred and sixty-four dollars a month with the new rate. So theirs are very, they are variable. The only thing that's variable, but it's based on how much water they're using into their system. It's easier to measure the water than it is to measure the wastewater. Wastewater is really dirty and gums things up. So we measure the water going into their building. And we say a hundred percent of that is going, is going to go down the drain to the treatment plant. And so they, they pay for that, for that use.
Okay. I, that makes a lot more sense to me. Um, now that you brought up slide number nine, uh, what is the difference between fast food one and fast food two? Is that, are those just two different examples of fast food restaurants that buy customer?
Yeah, just, yeah, just two different, uh, uh, one was a, a hamburger one and, and the other fast food was a, a dining room. And, uh, and so they just had different, different, uh, um, amounts of flow every month. But their strength, their, their, we measure the strength and when you see, it'll say high or low or medium. That's how strong their sewage is. And it, there's a classification of how you come up with that strength. And, uh, so low strength is going to be, you know, low strength commercials are going to be like banks and, and liquor stores and stuff like that. Um, your higher strengths are going to be your grocery stores where there, where a lot of organics are getting flushed down. Uh, your, your restaurants that a lot of grease and a lot of different organics come through the system. So it's a stronger and it's harder to treat that stuff. It costs more money to treat that and, uh, than the lower strength. So we have the three categories of, of what's a, a low strength, medium strength and a high strength.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay.
When, when you, when you presented, I know you presented both these slides and I heard them both. I just didn't make the connection between the two. So I appreciate that. That makes a lot more sense for me.
Sorry, I went through it so fast. Sorry about that.
No, no, it's, it's just, it's a lot to take in. And I, I've heard some of this information before, but just connecting the dots, um, um uh at least for me this time around was a little more difficult. So thanks for the presentation, and um this is uh quite interesting, quite honestly. Uh, thank you.
Miss Mister Clarkson, uh keeping this slide up for a sec. It I just, it's strange to me that a grocery store would be so high compared to say like a hotel. You would think that a hotel, you know, uh no offense to hotel, but I just tried to find one that's seemed like it would use a lot more water than a grocery store. I mean, just trying to struggle to think of why a grocery store would use that much more water, except for maybe the produce, you know, moisturizing like the old spray or things they have or whatever, but I don't know. Is it just because the square footage is a lot larger? I mean, even, I don't know, is there any explanation for that?
I think that it it just depends on on your grocery store. I mean, there is a lot of washing of produce, there's a lot of cleaning of systems, they, you know, they have a few restrooms. They have, like, a a lot of the grocery stores will have uh small bakeries in them. And so there's a lot of cleaning going on, a lot of dishwashing, a lot of things uh happening there. In your hotels, the the one hotel, um well, we looked at several hotels, but one that we picked at, pick, we picked on, it just had a little breakfast bar um that would happen. Um it's kind of like a brunch bar in in the morning, they they didn't really uh do anything other than a few rolls and a few pieces of fruit and stuff like that. And then when you look at the people using the rooms, um generally, people who are using a square footage in a room are gonna use a lot less water than people who are having a house. Because, you know, they're they're in it for a short period of time, they're in and out. And and I think you have a council member on your on your s- uh uh sitting up there that can tell you more about it than I can. But uh generally, there the water use is going to be a little less per occupant uh over, given that short period of time.
Interesting. What is the conversion?
That's why we only charge on a per a per CCF basis, because because some grocery stores are gonna are gonna use a lot less water, you know, if they don't have a bakery in. And uh and and so it's, they just get charged on how much water is going in based on their and and also based on the strength. So a hotel has a real weak strength or or a strength similar to residential. Whereas a grocery store is gonna have um uh, you know, a lot of stuff that people that put down the garbage disposal and stuff. That's really, that that costs a lot more money to to take care of than just the normal showers or washing machine uses. You know, that that you get, so.
Is there a formula that equates, like, you mean, referring to CCF, I'm just curious, like, how, what does it, what, how many gallons does that equate to? I mean, I probably could look it up online, but you know roughly off the top of your head, like?
Seven hundred and forty-eight.
Yeah, seven hundred and forty-eight gallons.
Oh, wow, okay, um, okay. So I was looking at your chart earlier, we're talking about five dollars per CCF, and I'm thinking, wow, but that's, so it's seven hundred some gallons. Um one last question, then my other council members go. So we're paying on SRF one, was started in two thousand and nine, SRF two started in fourteen, like a five year gap between the two. Uh we're now six years past or seven years past that. Um do you guys foresee being hit with uh any additional um upgrades required that would require us to go back out to finance? That's my first question. Second question is, how long are those two, SRF one and SRF twos, how long do those, are those gonna be on until we get those paid off?
Hey, the first one, the the last question's the easiest, they both had twenty year terms.
Okay.
Um and we started paying on SRF uh number two in two thousand and sixteen. And that was our first payment due, so we're we're still out, you know, seventeen years on that or so. And uh but but they're twenty year terms. And as far as the um as far as that the state is gonna come up with, I don't see anything in the near future. When I say the near future, in the next next five years or so, that's gonna impact us. Um and we can only take it five years at a time because that's how long the permit lasts. And this permit, we we're up for renewal right now, we'll get our permit sometime this summer. And it it does not have any, you know, a- any more restrictions on it um than we already have right now. So we shouldn't see, uh we will not see any big capital improvements of just be capital repairs and stuff over the course of the next five, five to seven years. And uh and but we don't know what will happen in the two thousand and and uh twenty-six permit. You know, there's, they're always conjuring something up in Sacramento, so.
All right.
But we don't see anything right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I just add one footnote, and and the other thing is, is what what the development, you know, may be over the next five years. I mean, if we have to expand the plan, do a major capital, you know, project to expand the plant, if development takes off, say, um, you know, that would be the only thing from that end. But with regard to the state, yeah, I think that's very good news that we don't anticipate anything from the state.
You you make a very good point, you just thought of me, maybe think of something that I think I asked, well, you weren't here, Mike, I met with Mister Winkler, and I actually think meeting uh way back from three years ago or so, what what capacity are, like, because we have, you know, we had very little development happening for a while, and then now we have, you know, a lot of infill projects going on. I'm I'm obviously, I'm assuming you guys keep a mind, close eye on development and start factoring. I mean, are what what capacity are we at? And with factoring in the new houses that are coming online or the ones that are even in the pipeline, um where are we at with capacity? Because if I'm not mistaken, it is a rule, there's a law, I mean, you're required to to have a buffer, you can't go to a hundred percent capacity, you have to keep a buffer, right?
That's, that's correct, yeah, this is Clarkson, that's correct. Well, what ha- you don't keep a, but what happens is, once you reach about seventy-five percent of your capacity, we have to submit to the state what we're going to do if we're going to exceed our treatment, you know, if there's anticipation that we're gonna exceed our treatment capacity. You know, i- if we're gonna have more houses and stuff. So we have to put a plan together to get buy into it. We can, you know, a- any city, any entity can say, hey, our our plant, and our plant's at a three MGD rated, can say, hey, that's all we're going, and we're not going any farther than that. You know, a- any entity can do that. Um if you go beyond that, then you've got to have, you know, if you plan on going behind beyond that, then at seventy-five percent of capacity, we have to let them know. We're at about sixty-five percent capacity right now. Um we we would have to add about another thousand, the fifteen hundred homes before we would reach that seventy-five percent. But the capacity we have in the plant right now is good for about three thousand residents.
Okay, so just doing some simple math, we're at sixty percent, when we get to seventy-five, we have to start making plans to expand. That only gives us fifteen percent, you said we can add about another fifteen hundred homes. Well, we have, we have far more than fifteen hundred homes, we have almost three thousand homes in the queue right now, if you count Eastview. So, I mean, is that of concern? I mean, it seems like that would be a concerning statistic that we're approving developments and not being cognizant of that.
It is, it is a con- it is a concern of, you know, we keep, we look at at what the growth rates are. You know, we're at about an average of about a hundred a year since I've been here, it's it's not really been uh that dramatic. But if somebody came in and and they started building, and we started building, you know, five hundred homes, there's no doubt that we would start putting our plans together. We we have a master plan right now that was to take us out to build out of the plant. So we we would relook at that master plan, and it and it's an environmental document, document that was good for twenty years. So right now, it's still good for another fifteen years, the environmental document that we that the council adopted and we went through. Um so so we can, on on a pretty quick pace, we can review the master plan, we can review the 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 environmental documents, and we can have something to the state in probably less than a year of what our what our plans would be. So it it's, it would be pretty fast.
So it would, it's, so it's not, it's not too, so let me understand, is is it not something to be alarmed about? Because not only do you have already kind of have like a plan kind of waiting in the wings, but if it, we were to get to that seventy-five percent, let's say, I don't know, let's say in three years from now, all these projects build out, and we're like knocking on the door seventy-five percent. I mean, if we we now have to make it a major investment in the plant to expand it, but does that money have to come from money we go out and borrow? Or is that gonna be financed by the very houses and stuff that are coming online?
We believe that that our next phase, what we've done with the rate, and that's what we did with our capacity fee study, is that once we reach at that about the eighty, eighty-five percent level, that we should have enough money to to increase our plant another uh by another fifty percent.
Okay.
And that's how, that's how our, the capacities were calculated into it. So the, so the money would not come from residents, it wouldn't come from loans, it would come from the capacity fees that developers pay every time they pull a a building permit.
Okay, so obviously, and so I just, I mean, it goes without saying, I I'm sure you guys are well aware and keep vigilant of what Craig's, you know, doing downstairs or upstairs, I forget which floor you guys are on. Um when he's uh talking to developers and stuff, you guys are like, keeping, keeping on the uh keeping, keeping a close ear to what he's doing, so you guys, he remembers about you guys' plan, and that would, that uh, there's more to it than just uh building houses, so. Thank you, that was informative, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Mister Papinow?
Yeah, um you said at the beginning you were gonna undertake another analysis like this, did you say in another year?
Yeah, for the, for the wastewater rate study, um we have one more rate um adoption that will happen next year that the previous council had adopted. And um and during that time or or about next year is when we'll start a new cost of service study for wastewater. And again, the council will be, will have men- multiple workshops, we're gonna have many things and and follow everybody through it. We'll do a a one-on-one uh rate uh review to where it's just, you know, for two to three hours at a workshop. Yeah, I know, some of you will call in sick at that time, but it's okay, we'll give you a warning. But it's gonna be a long workshop to where all of this, we just walk right through how how these things, how everything's connected together from regulations to um uh uh doing rates and how you set up rates. And so that will start in about a year, but before that, we're in a cost of service study right now, developing a one that we we hope to bring back to the council uh this summer, and that's on the water rates. Um we haven't had a water rate increase in uh well over ten years, uh other than a CPI adjustments. And uh and so we're, we're looking at all the, all the needs, all the cap, uh all all the capital, all the O and M, we're looking at that right now and gathering the information. Between finance and public works, we have a consultant on board who's who's putting all of this together. And uh and we'll start a, start doing some uh workshops uh this summer with the council on the water. Water's a little less tricky than the than the wastewater, but it's still um, still get a lot of people's attention.
Sure. That's the only question I had that wasn't covered, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Sandu, do you have a comment? I see your microphone's off.
No, no, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Vanderburg, anything?
No, you guys touched on all my concerns, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Lozano, anything? Okay, all right, well, uh we appreciate, is we, do we have any public comment on this, um before we finish off this, Tina?
No written comment.
Hands raised online, Rose?
I have no um hands raised online.
Okay, well, no public comment, no few, no additional comments from council. Uh thank you, Mike, for the presentation, thank you, uh Mister Clarkson, for going over this. And uh thank you, Mister Heinz, for bringing this back, yeah, to to uh for refresher on this. Uh we will, um that was just a presentation, so no, no action required. We'll move on to item I, communication, Mister Heinz, do we have anything?
No communications.
Okay. Uh next item, comments by staff, Mister Heinz.
Uh I think we went over the, did we go past the city clerk's report?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, we did, we both started with the, all right, item J, city clerk's report.
Uh nothing to report.
All right, thank you, Tina.
All right.
All right, now on to comments by staff, Mister Heinz.
Right, I have no further comments, um I will just go around the uh the room here and just call on the individual members of the executive team. Let's start with uh Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez.
Good evening, I'm just wanted to let everybody know that uh we last week launched uh on Nextdoor. So we'll start pushing out public um communication and meeting announcements and anything pertinent for the neighborhoods um beginning here within the next couple of days. So just wanted to let everybody know that that is sort of our next outreach effort with regard to social media interacting with the community, so. That would be it for this evening.
Very good, thank you, thank you. Uh Parks and Recreation Director, Armando Solis.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank my parks uh maintenance crew for handling all the cleanup of the storms in um our parks. Um I want to remind council that uh they're currently doing hard pruning in certain sections of the of our landscaping, so it looks a little rough, but it will come back. Um and also a reminder that as we see the rain and then the sun, rain and then the sun, we have weeds growing, uh landscaping is being done, landscape areas are done once a month, where the parks are mowed twice uh every two weeks. So just a reminder that we're not getting the weeds as much as we are getting the park, so, uh but we are getting them, so. All right, have a good night, guys.
Thank you, thank you. Uh Human Resources Director, Stephanie Van Steen.
Yes, good evening, council. Um I just thought I'd highlight some of our current job recruitments that we have open right now. Um for uh part-time and temporary positions, we're recruiting for a recreation worker and also a parks worker. Um and then for full-time job openings, we have a facilities and maintenance worker in the public works department. Um and we also have our police dispatcher and police officer job openings. So um if you know anyone um who's interested, please direct them to our human resources site, and they can click on job opportunities. And that's it for me.
All right, very good. Uh interim police chief, Brian Kalanowski.
Um the only thing I have to add on to what Stephanie mentioned about o- job openings is we started, our newest officer, Officer Herrera, this last week, swore her in, we have a new dispatcher starting on March first, Tatiana Marquez. Then I expect another officer right behind that, so department staff is working hard, the management team, getting everybody lined up and getting them through the process, and we could not do that without um the support of our HR department, uh who's been instrumental in helping us with that. And uh that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Community Development Director, Craig Hoffman.
Uh, the only thing I was gonna offer was uh to respond back to the mayor, public work staff and community development staff, we do spend a lot of time looking at building permits, what our potential growth rates look like, what developments are coming online, so we use that, and then that also helps with the budget numbers. So it's something that we are projecting and and looking at, you know, what are we doing in two years, three years, five years? So we do keep track of that, and other than that, thank you all, and have a great night.
All right, thank you. Um, City Attorney, Harriet Steiner.
I I have nothing to add, I hope you all have a good evening and a good rest of the week.
All right, City Clerk, Tina Hubert, anything?
Nothing further, thank you.
All righty, and our Administrative Assistant, Rose Rodacker?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, I think we got everybody. All right, I return it to you.
Mister Heinz, did uh, was there a com- were you gonna comment on something we discussed about the, regarding the crime activity about particular item, remember we discussed, were you gonna touch on that?
I am.
Uh we talked about the, we were gonna um just briefly mention the that PD was.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you, Mister Mayor, thank you. So we've had a rash of mailbox um damage and thefts. And so we'd like to remind the public to be vigilant and and check your mail, because clearly, we've got a rash of uh those crime crimes going on right now. So just be careful out there. Also, apparently, there's a rash of catalytic converter thefts on for those folks who own Priuses. So be vigilant for anyone sus- suspicious in the neighborhood that's just sort of walking around and and sliding up under cars, because I understand that you, these things can be removed pretty quickly. So just keep, keep an eye on the neighborhood, keep an eye on um everyone's property.
Thank you, Mister Heinz.
Sure.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh very quick, first of all, I would like to thank you all the staff, uh give us a good report, so we can make a decision. I also like to thank all the community members to give us a public comment. Public comment is very important for me as Vice Mayor. And we, I understand any public comment, I took very seriously, and I believe all my And we I understand any public comment I took very seriously, and I believe all my colleagues also took very seriously. And I also especially thank you, Ms. Martin. Uh, she bring the public comment regard that. Major R. Thank you, Ms. Martin again. And that's it. And have you safe and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papinow.
I don't have anything to add. I just thank you to the staff for all the very thorough reports.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hey, everybody. Uh, I have actually not been feeling very well the last couple of days. Uh, so I actually got a COVID test and it was negative, fortunately, but I just want to. Put out there that it did cost two hundred dollars, but I was able to get a COVID test uh like on demand at Mantica Urgent Care. At two four one West Yosemite Avenue. So if it's a must as it was for me, otherwise I could not go to work. I got it done. And once I arrived, it was done in about a half an hour. So it was pretty convenient if that's the thing that you need to do. Um, I popped into the Parks and Recreation meeting this week and they actually had a very informative. Um, presentation on what each portion of the staff does. Uh, they're quite busy people. Uh, it was, uh, they should share. I think they should share with the public if they get an opportunity, you know, maybe dress it up a little bit, but it was it was nice and short and very informative, and I think it. Might help the public understand a little bit more about the city and what people do in that department. That and uh. I would like to again thank people from the Measure R for uh challenging us to do the things that we do, you know, it's it's not always easy to to put us on the spot and. Uh, it's not always an easy decision. It certainly wasn't for me. And I appreciate that they do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Vandenberg. Mister Lozano.
Yeah, I just have one thing. Uh, I got a, all right, not even a complaint, but just observation from a citizen. Um, who um said that asked if we could um cut down the shrubs at um. On Corillian, just south of Walnut where the crosswalks are. There's two lighted crosswalks there and the um. And the shrubs grow a little high, and if you're not in a truck or an SUV or something, it's kind of hard to see pedestrians, especially in the. Early morning or late evening hours. And so. Um, unfortunately, those that cross are sometimes kids and they're little and you can't see them and then they don't always use the uh. The lighted feature of the crosswalk. And so. Um, the request was if we could take a look at those shrubs, both on either side of the crosswalk and see what we can do about. Cutting them down or or even even over time, maybe replace them with a ground cover so that we don't have the issue of having to to trim them up. Um, it's difficult for folks to see, so. Um, I don't worry as much about our citizens that know the area. It's more the. Folks that aren't uh aren't from the area that may not necessarily recognize the crosswalk or um or whatever. So. If we could take a look at that, I'd appreciate it. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozano.
Uh, Mister Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before you start, and I always, uh, I I want your comments to be the last comments of the meeting. Um, I made the mistake of uh uh not calling on our the director of our second largest department. Uh, Public Works Director Mike Selling to see if he had any comments for the public or the council, and I'm sorry about that, Mike.
Oh, no apologies necessary. No, nothing really. I mean, yeah, we definitely talked a lot. I I just wanted to express appreciation of Mister Clarkson. For his uh his knowledge and thoroughness in covering the sewer rates and and capacity fees. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mister.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of things. I want to, I was supposed to mention this last time and I I just totally forgot, but I I've had a couple um senior citizens reach out to me. Um, that are concerned about the the way they usually pay their utility bills or their city bill. They they don't they don't do online payments and they don't write checks. They said, you know, they said specifically who uses checks anymore. That's what they said. So they they're kind of a cash paying people and I know that, you know, my father was kind of the same way. And so. They're just concerned with the difficulty in doing that and I I. I don't know if we have a protocol in place where someone could show up to the to City Hall and they could call a number on the door and then someone could come and they could. You know, hand the cash. I I don't know. I I think we just need to be thinking about that because there is quite a few people that are like that and they're they're struggling with. They're actually going and paying and buying a money order and then dropping it off and money orders cost money and these are people that are on fixed incomes. And so. It was brought to my attention. I totally apologize. I did not bring it to your attention sooner, but I just remembered it right now. So if we can maybe. Uh, look into that or figure out some way we can do that. Um, you can get back to me on that, uh Mister Heinz. Uh, other than that, um, just want to thank, you know, staff for good presentations tonight. Um, uh, thank you, Mister Clarkson, for a very in-depth conversation on the on all the water stuff. Um, I want to think uh as other council members do, I want to thank you to the Oversight Committee um for the Measure R and Ms. Martin for um her diligence. I know it's tough to. To speak up and I know that, you know, um, they didn't, you know, some of their concerns may have not have been addressed or whatever, but I I think the council had a very. Um, thorough discussion on the matter. And I think we had a a good, you know, healthy dialogue, and I think we've got some good plans going forward and I feel good about that. And. Other than that, I just uh probably leave something off, but. I think that'll do it for tonight. It's been a long meeting, so everybody's anxious to get off. So be safe out there, everybody. Um, have a good weekend coming up and we'll see you next time. Good night.
All right, good night.